Good evening, Margaret. I just wanted to test my audio. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you loud and clear.
Margaret, I'm just double checking my audio. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me okay?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight, September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, for the City Council Successor Agency Brentwood Infrastructure Financing Authority Meeting. We do have a quorum. Margaret, could I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mendoza? Councilmember Mendoza? Councilmember Meyer?
Here.
Councilmember Rary?
Here.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Here.
Mayor Bryant?
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza? I see she's here. I think she's having audio problems. We can't hear her.
Well, with the indulgence of council, we can give her just a moment to make sure her audio is working.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you loud and clear. Great.
Perfect.
At this time, you will join with me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we will open public comments. I'll turn it to you, Margaret.
At this time, the public is permitted to address the city council on items that are not on the agenda, items listed under presentation, informational reports, or on the consent calendar, requests for future agenda items, new requests. Please save your comments for any other items that are on the agenda for that part of the meeting when you'll have the opportunity to provide them. I received one written public comment on this item that was submitted prior to the meeting. A copy will be shown on the presentation slide. The city council has been provided a full copy of the written public comment, and these are available on the city council agenda's webpage. If you wish to speak under public comment, please raise your hand using the Zoom feature. I'll call your name if provided and unmute you to speak. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. While we encourage your comments, state law prevents the city council from discussing items that are not on their meeting agenda, and if appropriate, staff will follow up on them. I do have three hands raised. I'll go ahead and share the speaker timer screen. And I'll start with Bruce Oli Olsen, followed by Carolina Villaseca. Mr. Olsen, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Bryant, councilpersons, staff, and fellow citizens. I am Oli Olsen, East County's Mr. Bicycle. We have recently learned that Costco has submitted an application to build a warehouse superstore in Brentwood, nestled in the northwest corner of our community, right where Brentwood, Antioch, and Oakley come together. It will be located just to the west of the New Bicycle and Pedestrian Bridge that is currently being built over Highway Four and right alongside the McCullum Aqueduct Regional Trail. We want some mitigations, please, for the eight to ten thousand new automobile trips that this big store will generate. We do not want to chase Costco away, but it will be hard for them to refuse to provide for the safety of pedestrians and bicyclists in the vicinity of their new store, so we should ask for a lot. We should ask for mitigations for each of the communities affected. As you know, Costco is the third largest retailer in the United States. These small mitigations will cost just a few minutes' worth of the profit that this store will generate. Here is what we propose. In Brentwood, we want a connector trail built along the east side of Highway Four that will connect the McCullum Aqueduct Trail with the Sand Creek Trail. In Antioch, we want to add a pedestrian bicyclist phase to Lone Tree Way at Hillcrest Avenue signalized intersection. This is where the McCullum Aqueduct Trail crosses both of these streets. In Oakley, we want improvements to Empire Avenue where it crosses the railroad tracks. As you know, Empire Avenue goes through Brentwood, a little corner of Antioch, and lots of Oakley. Over most of its length, it is a wide suburban boulevard with two nice sidewalks, two bicycle lanes, four automobile traffic lanes, and a landscaped median. However, where Empire Avenue crosses the railroad tracks, it narrows to two eleven-foot traffic lanes with no provision for bicycles and pedestrians. So, Mayor Bryant, here you have some requests from the pedestrian and bicycle community to make the street to make the streets and trails in the vicinity of the new Costco warehouse superstore safer. Far from chasing Costco away, these few and inexpensive mitigations will give them an opportunity to...
The speaker's timer had expired. I'll call on Carolina Villaseca, followed by Danny Dorman. Carolina, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. I missed you guys. So I'm back. I'm back, actually, to invite you all to a wonderful event that would take place on October sixteenth in Brentwood City Park. It's the Diwali Festival. It's going to be a delicious and colorful event that will include food, music, dance, and traditional Rangoli display art and crafts. So everybody is welcome. This is an event put on by united-indian.org group, and their goal is to make everybody feel welcome and invite everyone in the Brentwood community and the surrounding areas to come and learn about the culture, the delicious food, to see the kids dance, enjoy the music, and see the beautiful arts and crafts that are part of the Indian community. Tickets are five dollars a person and fifty percent off for kids under five. For kids, and then kids under five are free, and you can buy the tickets at united-indian.org. I am certainly looking forward to seeing all of the city council members there, and maybe we can even get Mayor Bryant out there doing a little Bollywood dance. That would be great. And everyone, like I said, everyone in the community is welcome to attend. This is wonderful. I have many friends that will be there, and I can't wait to see everybody. So thank you so much for your time. October nineteenth. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Danny Dorman. Mr. Dorman, go ahead.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. As everyone knows, District Two and Four will have an election. I'm in District One, so I have no skin in this particular game. However, the results of those two districts will affect the city. That puts a little bit of game, a little bit of skin in the game for me. What I'd like to bring up is what I don't know, and I don't know if other residences or on the call or not, know who's running. And again, because I don't live in neither Two nor Four, there isn't a reason for me to know, but I think it would be nice. I had heard that the candidates recently had an article written about them, and that's great. I don't know if everybody already heard about it or not. I'm hoping that they will do something, maybe come on one of the calls and speak about their bona fides for three minutes or introduce themselves, whatever the case may be, because they will affect the city. I know one of the big questions I have, and I would ask that of anyone running at any time, what has been your participation in the city, particularly when it comes to meetings? And maybe they're here all the time. Again, I don't know who's running except for one. So that's it. I encourage whoever is running to come out and talk to us because you are going to affect us for the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional hands raised. Oh, I have just one more hand raised. Cenziana Todor, go ahead.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. I hear Mr. Dorman is asking city council candidates for District Two and Four to introduce themselves. I think I've been here enough, so everyone pretty much knows my name. But in the spirit of transparency and answering residents' requests, here I am. I am a candidate for Brentwood City Council District Two, and what I stand for and my platform is around smart growth and development and trying to uphold the general plan and keep local control within limits of the law. Also, I stand and I am really serious about making responsible financial decisions, balance the budget with adequate reserves, prioritize local projects that improve our quality of life here in Brentwood. Also, another important item on my platform is job creation. I do walk my own door hangers and I speak with residents during my walks as well as Brentwood farmers market every weekend, and all I hear is they want local jobs. So in that spirit, there's an item on the agenda today, PA One. Please pay attention and don't let your residents down. Make it happen with a very well-balanced approach between jobs and housing, that plan for that area. Also, attracting new and diverse businesses and advocating, again, for innovation center as a priority of the strategic plan will be one of my focuses if I get elected. And what I think is really, really important, and it's been transparent throughout my activity and my time dedicated to our community, is that I am a big advocate of maintaining and improving communication and transparency through timely, clear, efficient communication with residents to bring awareness and stimulate involvement in cities' affairs. So yeah, this is me, Cenziana Todor, your candidate for Brentwood City Council District Two. If you want to know more information about me, my website is cenziana.org. Please visit it, send me a message, and learn more about me. Thank you, and have a good meeting tonight.
Thank you. I have no additional hands raised.
Thank you. At this time, then, we will close public comments and move into informational reports from councilmembers committees, liaison staff. With Councilmember Mendoza.
Hello. Since the last time we met, I had meetings with Cal Cities Legislative Call to Action, sign and veto requests for the Governor Coalition, which we can all do, not just councilpeople. Attended the League of Cities Conference for three days. It was a whirlwind. It was a lot of people and a lot of classes. I attended the Cali meeting after the Cal Cities just to reorganize and what's going on with our initiative. I've been attending house parties for the Our Neighborhood Voices on Wednesday nights. Anyone can attend those. If you go to ourneighborhoodvoices.com and learn how you can help with the initiative every Wednesday night at six. We had a Housing Element meeting. I was at the farmers market on Saturday and just heard some feedback about downtown, and I've shared this with staff. A lot of the business owners are getting disappointed with the cleanliness downtown. They say it's getting really dirty, the sidewalks. Having food and drink is great, but they're concerned that the stains on the sidewalk, no one power washes it and things, and there's a lot of garbage more than they've ever seen, so they want that addressed. And the top act for residents, which is, it's really funny, I mean, we are a playful city. People want indoor basketball courts, more tennis courts, more pickleball courts. They asked for soccer fields, but I told them those are on the way. So that's what I've been up to.
Thank you. Councilmember Meyer?
Thank you. Since our last meeting, and it's a little tough to remember what happened when, I think the Downtown Coalition kickoff was in this last period of time, a wonderful event organized by Amy Tilly, who's doing an amazing job. Did the mayors and councilmembers run a show meeting for the California League of Cities Annual Conference? And the conference itself, some good sessions, including ways to revitalize underserved areas to improve quality of life for residents without fear of gentrification. The Mayors and Councilmembers Division meeting, where I was appointed president of the statewide division. The Housing Element Special Council Meeting. Attended the National Day of Service Cleanup in Veterans Park along with Chief Hanson, Captain Silva, and Herbert, Superintendent Dana Eaton, the Rotary, Sir Optimus Lyons, and a lot of community members and young kids joining into that, which was great. And also helped to set up for the annual fundraiser barbecue at the East Contra Costa Historical Society and enjoyed it so much that I signed up for a family membership. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Rary?
Yes, thank you. Since the last time we met, I attended the Tipicop event at Zephyr's and had a wonderful meal that evening and for a great cause, donating to the Special Olympics. I attended the Housing Element. I spoke with a resident regarding PAL. I spoke with another resident regarding an issue they are having with a council member. I attended harassment prevention training, understanding public service ethics laws, scaling up fostering innovation through technology pilot projects, infrastructure recovery after disaster, California statewide park development and community revitalization, supporting local businesses to raise community capital, secrets to building tech economies in underestimated cities, dealing with deferred maintenance, rural retail, making your community competitive. And I think that's it. Yeah, I think that's it. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes, Mayor. I think I have this right. The Downtown Brentwood Coalition had a gathering at the Brentwood Veterans Hall. I attended that. Really good event. I think they did a really good job of bringing some of the local businesses, but also people together to meet. Also, I attended the Gran Fiesta that the city was part of in regards to funding a portion of this. I just really want to thank Tony from the Brentwood Chamber of Commerce, and then also the Brentwood Chamber of Commerce in general, the whole group. They did a wonderful job. It was a wonderful event. The entertainment was good. The food was good. The whole energy was good. And I'll be honest, historically in Brentwood, the Latino community hosted many events at Downtown City Park, so it was really nice to see that happen this year. Looking forward to seeing next year's. So once again, I just want to congratulate the Brentwood Chamber of Commerce for a wonderful event that they hosted for the community. That's it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I had one more thing to add to that. I spoke with Dan Vorenstein from the East Bay Times regarding our Measure Q initiative.
Thank you.
Yeah, actually, yeah, I spoke to him. He was very excited about it, so. It's a great article. If anyone can read it, it's the East Bay Times. It's fantastic, the editorial.
Thank you all. Since the last time we met, I also attended the League of California Cities, the Cal Cities meetings in Long Beach. During that time, I met with eleven different mayors and local representatives from Contra Costa County regarding a regional approach to our future growth and job and technology acquisition plans so that we can all work together to help support each other's mutual benefit in business regarding the East County as a whole. All of us do business and travel in each other's communities, and so we're, each one of us have different areas of benefit that we can provide. And so some very good productive meetings for those in those areas and conversations. Also attended the Housing Element that council had, as well as the Downtown Brentwood Coalition Meet and Greet, and Amy Tilly, who is the president of the Downtown Brentwood Coalition, did an outstanding job. It was great to meet a lot of the local businesses that we have downtown. If you haven't had an opportunity to come down and meet some of the businesses, in addition to the restaurants and other things for family beverage intake and entertainment, we've got some outstanding businesses downtown as well that really are helpful when you're looking for someone to do legal advice and other things. So come downtown. It'll help you out. Also, I attended a meeting with the group that is putting together the LMC Recognition and Fundraiser event at Trilogy this Friday in an effort to celebrate the opening of our LMC campus. This event has been postponed for almost three years now due to COVID, and it's finally happening. I also met with the Airport Land Use Commission regarding the the future potential use of I-239 and transportation issues. And if you can, if you go to the county and you want to look at what the future looks like, the county has a website. Just go look for I-239, and it will give you an update on all of the current potential uses and plans there. I also attended the mayor's conference where we had Nick Weinberg Lin, who is one of the directors of Phillips Sixty-Six, speaking to us regarding the new direction that the Phillips Sixty-Six refinery in the East Bay is going. They are no longer going to be producing any raw fuel materials. They are going to be using only renewable fuels, working toward biodiesel as well as a regular gas and those kind of products that will be one hundred percent recyclable and reusable. So that is an outstanding change. They will be producing potentially forty million gallons of gas that way, as well as ten million gallons of diesel. So that's going to make a measurable impact in the air, the greenhouse gases, all of these different things that the production of these materials have. They're doing great things with that. Also spoke to a representative that is working with company called GAMI regarding production of unleaded, high-octane aviation fuel. The FAA just approved that, so some of the concerns, I've talked to a few residents in Brentwood regarding some of the leaded fuel contamination issues that some of the airports in our area have had. We finally have an alternative that is a non-ledded alternative that will be introduced to the fuel supply chain over the next year and a half to two years, and that's going to eliminate the concern about the lead contamination. And so with that, I have nothing more to report along those lines. This time, we'll move into the consent calendar. Do I have a, oh, I'm sorry. I've got some proclamations here. Before we make the proclamations, I do want to announce that those that are receiving proclamations tonight, if you would like to come by the city and get your own copy of this proclamation, please feel free to do so. You can come down to the desk, and you'll be provided with your own personal copy of it, or it can be mailed to you. So item B one is the proclamation proclaiming September fifteenth as National Hispanic Heritage Month, and Councilmember Mendoza is going to present this.
Thank you, Mayor. Very proud to be able to present this. Whereas Brentwood draws strength from its extraordinary diversity of people, and its character is enhanced by citizens who maintain and honor cultural customs brought from other lands. And whereas Hispanic people were among the earliest settlers in California, in Contra Costa County, and other regions of the United States, and over the years have come to this country in search of democracy, freedom, and a better way of life. And over the two, over the years have come to this country in search of democracy, freedom, and a better way of life. A diverse and vibrant cultures, culture includes elements originating in Europe, North America, Central America, South America, and the Caribbean. And whereas Hispanics have had a profound and positive impacts on our community and shaped our character with cultural customs and influences. And whereas Hispanic sons and daughters have served our country with distinction, helping to preserve the democracy and freedom for all Americans to enjoy. And since World War One, Hispanics have been awarded the Medal of Honor more than any other ethnic group. And whereas in nineteen eighty-eight, the President of the United States authorized and requested an annual proclamation designating a thirty-one day period beginning September fifteenth and ending October fifteenth as National Hispanic Heritage Month. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Brentwood does hereby recognize September fifteenth through October fifteenth, twenty twenty-two as Hispanic Heritage Month and calls upon the residents of Brentwood to observe the month with ru- reverence and gratitude. And now I have some words, um, about Miguel Saldana, and I think he was going to raise his hand to speak. So Miguel, if you can raise your hand, then, um, they'll be able to make you a panelist. Um, Miguel Saldana is, well, first of all, Miguel Saldana is from Veracruz. If you don't know where Veracruz is, it's the, it's the birthplace of Salma Hayek and Kalua. So that's kind of where he's from. But Miguel is a longstanding business donor in Brentwood, Quion de su calderia, which he has been running since twenty sixteen. Miguel has been integral in keeping our Latino authentic traditions alive by bringing them directly to the community. A few examples are yearly posadas for the holidays, Dia del Niño celebrations, seven years of Day of the Dead festivals, and many more events. During COVID, Miguel was key to helping Contra Costa County, La Clínica de la Raza, and Ica del Campo, and offering COVID-related resources to those most in need, our field workers and neighbors from the village. We appreciate him offering his space. Lastly, Miguel is transforming Brentwood Boulevard and has been the catalyst for the exterior improvement we see there today. He partnered with the center owner to secure a city grant for the landscape improvements we see today. As a Latina, Mexico Americana, I want to thank Miguel for all you have done for Brentwood. I think Margaret said we were going to give him the opportunity to speak if he raised his hand. Oh, I think Suzanne had something to say.
Uh, if Miguel wants to speak first, that's fine with me. I just wanted to add a few things if that's all right, or?
You, you can go ahead. I don't think he's raised his hand yet.
Okay, um, I just, I just wanted to mention that, uh, last year, of course, um, we, the Broderick Apartments fire, um, impacting thirty-six residents in the, in this lower income apartment complex. And, um, there was some of us from the community, some of us from nonprofits. We had some city staff involved with the process of trying to support these residents through probably one of the hardest things I've ever dealt with. And the very first day that, um, I went to the apartment to see what was happening and how we could all be involved, Miguel was there. And, um, he offered translation services. He was a kind of a comforting and well-known community member trusted liaison. So his presence there allowed, um, the city and me and nonprofit leaders to come in and, and bring other resources to, uh, the residents who were impacted by the fire. And if he hadn't been there, it would not have been anywhere near, um, as smooth a process to bring the resources in. And he also offered up, um, a zucar as a, as a site for people to drop off food donations and clothing and gift cards. And for residents to come and pick up Christmas toys for their kids. Um, he did all of it without any, uh, public notice, really. He just kind of was, was there and was just really a solid support system for people that were in a dire place of need in their lives. And, and so I just wanted to add that on to what was already said. I, I truly support Miguel receiving, um, this proclamation. Thank you.
Can we unmute him, I think?
Hello? You hear me?
Hi, Miguel.
Hi, how are you?
Good. Go ahead.
Okay, um, I wasn't expecting this, but thank you so much. Um, I feel really, um, happy that you guys, um, uh, thinking about me, about our things we do with the community. And we're here for help, um, each other and we're here, here for help, um, or our, our people in need. And thank you for this recognition. Hello?
Yes, uh, th- thank you, Mr. Saldana. We greatly appreciate your, um, your being here tonight and receiving this, uh, recognition. Uh, council member Mendoza, is, is that, is Mr. Saldana the only individual you were wanting to recognize tonight?
Oh, we are also recognizing two other individuals. Sorry, found out about this late today. Um, Ike Montañez and Bertha Ruiz, and I think Vice Mayor Johnny Rodriguez might have some things to say.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Mendoza. Um, I really wanted to recognize both of these on this, um, um, opportunity in regards to the proclamation. Uh, Bertha Reese is a graduate from Liberty High School in nineteen sixty-nine here in Brentwood. Bertha Reese is highly respected, um, in Brentwood and also in Far East Contra Costa County. Bertha is a lifelong community volunteer. Bertha has served on the Los Manaus College Foundation Board. Bertha has been a immense resource to the community in working with at-risk youth, immigrant family, farm fam- farm working families, and Hispanic population. Bertha has reached, has received the Ser Optimist Woman Dist- Distinction and Woman of the Year Award. Bertha, Bertha was honored by the Brentwood Chamber of Commerce for her dedicate devotion to the citizens of the, uh, the, the citizens of Brentwood by being named the citizens, the citizen of the year. Bertha has also received the Los Manaus College Sessao Chavez Award for her dedication to the community. Bertha was recognized as Liberty Union High School Soul School District Graduate of Distinction. Um, so Bertha, and I just want to say a little bit, um, I've known Bertha when my mother worked with her at the United Council. I've known Bertha since I was probably two or three years old. She continues to do wonderful work. Um, she's actually worked, has retired, but still doing work for East Bay, East Bay Works, um, and working with families and helping people get jobs and work on resumes. So I really just want to recognize Bertha for all the great stuff that she has done for many, many years. She actually grew up here in Bee Ge Camp. If people know where that's at, that's where the police station is actually located currently. There used to be a farm camp for a lot of our residents and Bertha actually was raised and grew up in that community. Uh, when it comes to Ike Montañez, um, and, and when I mentioned both of these, these are elders slash large pillars within the Latino Hispanic community in Far East County. Um, Ike Montañez was a former principal for the Brentwood Union School District, an elementary principal at Garin. She'd worked, he was actually my former principal and many others. Um, he worked directly with our parents. And both of my parents worked in the farms here in Brentwood. So he worked with the farm working community tremendously. He's also a former Brentwood Union School District Board Member. He was the first Latino Hispanic, I mean Latino Hispanic Board Member. Ike also has created a foundation called the Ike Montañez Foundation where he has supported Latino students to be able to have funds to be able to go to college and hopefully support them in some of their finances when it comes to that. Ike has sat on various community nonprofits within the, uh, community. He's also sit on the Village Drive Resource Center Board and others. Ike also has, um, been named Citizen of the Year from the Brentwood Chamber of Commerce for all the wonderful work he has done for a long time. Um, Ike has also won the Sessao Chavez Award there from Los Manaus College. And the reason why I want to recognize both of these, these are tremendous elders of our community. They're tremendous pillars of our community. And they've done wonderful work, not only for the city of Brentwood, but for all of Far East Contra Costa County. Thank you.
Thank you for that beautiful proclamation. Uh, we are so fortunate in our community to have so many absolutely magnificent people uh, that live lives of, of sacrifice and service, uh, that just make all of our lives so much better. And we're very thankful for, for all of them. Uh, at this time, uh, do we have a motion for the rest of the consent calendar?
I make the motion to adopt the consent calendar for all items because we haven't adopted any, so we can adopt them all at once, right?
That's great.
Second.
Okay. We have a first and a second. Margaret?
I'll read the ordinance title for item B four and then, um, finish the roll call vote. An ordinance amending the City Council Administrative Policy ten dash seven Purchasing Policy to Update Types of Purchases Section to Clarify Individual Requirements for Types of Purchases and to Increase the Agreement Requirement Threshold for Services From one thousand to fifteen hundred, update the federal procurement section more closely to match the public contract code, code of federal regulations and the Brentwood Municipal Code, update the quote section to increase the availability of goods and services while maintaining best pricing. Update the exception section to facilitate mandatory payments to federal, state, and local governments and add an additional exception for advertising and publications and update the miscellaneous procedures to clarify the long-term agreements exceptions. Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Hi.
Mayor Bryant?
Hi.
Motion carries unanimous?
Okay, thank you. Uh, before we move into item C, uh, out of an abundance of caution, I had previously recused myself from participating in this item. I had done so while awaiting the FPPC's decision on whether I had a disqualifying conflict of interest in this matter. We have now received the FPPC's formal advice that I have no such conflict under the Political Reform Act. And therefore tonight I will join the council in considering this item. Uh, this item, item C one, under public hearings, uh, is the proposed Orchard Grove Residential Development. Uh, and Crystal De Castro will present on the item from staff. Crystal?
Crystal, we can't hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Great. Thank you. And can you see my screen as well?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good evening. The project before you tonight is the Orchard Grove subdivision by Shea Homes. The application includes a vesting tentative map and, uh, a destined to create fifty-one single-family residential lots, one buyer retention lot, and other related improvements. The project also includes a density bonus and a designer view for the fifty-one homes. The fifty-one homes is, are comprised of forty-five single-family homes and six affordable duet units. Some background and some history. On May third, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to review the proposed project and recommended the item for council approval. On June twenty-eighth, the council reviewed the proposed project. And at that meeting, council discussed concerns related to certain aspects of the proposal related to landscaping, design, circulation, the placement and design of the affordable units and the schedule of the construction of the duet unit. Council then made a motion to continue the item at a later date and refers the item to the Land Use and Develop- Development Committee, or LED. Prior to the item being rescheduled for council consideration, LED met on August fifteenth to review the proposed project and provided input and recommendations to staff and the applicant so that any corresponding project modifications could be made prior to council's consideration this evening. The applicant has revised the proposed project based on the council's and LED's recommendations, which include the following. Landscaping and fencing along Lone Oak Road and Gracie Lane and the buyer retention area. The paved turnaround on Gracie Lane with an EVA gate and an adjacent landscaping within the project boundary. Design of the intersection at the corner of Lone Oak and Gracie Lane. And the architectural style, placement, and construction schedule for the affordable duet units. Here you have the primary landscape plan. And now the proposal includes, and this is, um, one of the items that were discussed. Strawberry trees, a broadleaf evergreen tree, and additional foliage along Gracie Lane and Lone Oak. And, um, we'll look at more detail on the next slide. The paved emergency vehicle turnaround at the end of Gracie Lane includes an EVA gate, and that will be seen in the next slide too, to allow for pedestrian access at the end of Gracie Lane. No hub vehicular access is provided on Gracie Lane, and that will not change with this project. Additional landscaping has also been provided within this paved turnaround area within the project boundary. The masonry wall was extended along the eastern and southern interior perimeter of the buyer retention basin, as you see here depicted in the red line. While a three-foot tall split rail fence runs along the exterior perimeter of the buyer retention area along Gracie Lane and Lone Oak. There is now a rounded corner provided at the corner of Gracie and Lone Oak. The following elevations show the columns with caps as recommended by council and LED, which were added to the six-foot-high masonry wall similar to the wall along O'Hara Way. The columns and caps would be delineated at property lines and gray changes. Also shown in this elevation is the EVA gate at the end of Gracie Lane. The split rail fencing along the buyer retention area and the enhanced landscaping along Gracie Lane, Lone Oak, and the buyer retention area. The revised plant palette includes a chart of grasses and other vegetation that could be planted within the basin in accordance with the county stormwater plant requirements and the city's native species list for drought tolerant plants. Council and LED also requested applicant add a second architectural style to the affordable duets and disperse the units to ensure the elevation cells are not repeated on adjacent lots. One set of duets is located here on thirteen was moved towards the eastern edge of the sieve division along Adams Lane in order to disperse the units as much as possible. As a result, the duet units are now located on lots one and two, fourteen and fifteen, and twenty-six and twenty-seven. And you might not be able to see here, but we could zoom in. But another request was to screen the AC units. And this little dot right here in back of the duet units are the locations for the AC units. A second elevation was also added to the duet design. So the architectural styles now include craftsmen and early California Spanish, consistent with the architectural style of the market rate homes. The draft condition of approval requires the construction of the affordable units in three phases with the construction of the market rate units. The construction schedule of the affordable homes will be provided in the affordable housing agreement, subject to review and consideration by the city council at a future date. In conclusion, the proposed project meets the intent of the goals and policies of the general plan, the housing element, and the zoning district, and is consistent and complies with the Affordable Housing Ordinance. The project complies with the state density bonus and residential design guidelines. Therefore, staff recommends the council adopt the mitigated negative deck and approve the project as condition. Staff is available for any questions. And thereafter, the applicant, David Best from Shea Homes, is also in attendance tonight um, to address any questions or concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mendoza.
Hello, thank you so much for that, Crystal. I have, um, there's an email receipt from the residents with a couple of questions that I forwarded on to Tim. Not sure if you got that or not.
I did. Was it the one earlier with a list of question, like four questions?
Yeah. So I don't know if we want to go through those questions real quick. Um, they were asking about the EVA, uh, gate at Gracie Lane. So the design of the gate, I mean, that was, because I think there might be public comments, so maybe we address it first. And then if they still have questions, they can do that during public comment. But I, I don't know if we want to go through them all. Do you have the email?
I do have the email. Um, so the first one regarding the EVA gate, and I, I'll ask Engineering and Public Works to jump in with some of these. But I'll go over some of them right now. The EVA gate, we shared the screen. I, I don't know if you need to see that again, with the picture of the EVA gate. Would you like to see that again?
If we could see a bigger picture. I know I saw the little tiny one, but like if you're standing in front of it, do we know what that's going to look like? Can we put that up?
Let me, um, sure. So let me open that up. But in the meantime, is Public Works and Engineering on the line? And maybe they could help, um, go through some of the questions while I get that, um, that plan up and zoom in on it.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. So I understand, um, one of the questions was, um, to make sure that there's an actual gate instead of ballards. And that is the plan. That is what's, uh, proposed by the applicant. So there will be a, um, an actual gate. Um, I believe there was a comment about, um, placing, um, a sound wall or pilasters on either end of the gate. I, uh, that's not a, uh, a requirement by Public Works. And I, I don't think the fire district would require that either. So, um, I don't think there's a nexus for us to require that, uh, those types of improvements. um, I don't think there's a nexus for us to require that, uh, those types of improvements.
Okay. And I know there's, um, one side, the landscaping is going to be taken care of by Shea. They're gonna install everything, right? One side of the gate. Um, does the other side, the, the city own the other side then? Or who owns the other side where that gate is sitting?
Uh, I believe the other side, there's a, um, a public, uh, access easement. So it may be owned by the property owner to the south, um, but I believe the city has some rights of access over that land. And I'm looking at the landscape plan and it's not showing any landscape on the southerly half of that gate currently.
Could we use the, um, the landscape lighting, all those fees to put some landscaping on the other side? So it's flanked on both sides and kind of gives a little bit more cover? Or is that something we discuss at a later date?
I, if, yeah, if the question is, can the, can the applicant as part of this development add some landscaping on that side? I believe that's a question for the applicant. I do know that.
Well, no, not even, not even the applicant, but like us as a city, right? We're going to be collecting fees for lighting and landscaping. Is that something we can look into? And how, because it's not a big area.
Yeah, yeah, those are typically for, for maintenance. Um, but I, I would defer to the, the parks or legal if they can, um, provide further clarification. But it's my understanding, those are for maintaining landscaping, not necessarily for installing new lands.
And, and there's no water source to the other side.
Okay, that would make sense. And okay, and then the next thing, I'm sorry, sorry, go ahead, Katie.
No, forgive me. Um, that's exactly right. I'm, I'm not sure that we have any sort of, um, um, maintenance nexus here because there is no existing landscaping there. Um, but if this is an area that council was interested in improving, we could schedule a separate agenda item to talk about it because it's not technically part of this project, but it could be brought back at a later date for your consideration. Thank you.
Okay. And any signage we would talk about at a later date because that would be city signage, like the no parking signs, dead end signs, those aren't Shea, those are our response. Like that would be something the city decides, right?
Yeah, the, the issue of, yeah, the issue of adding those, uh, no parking signs along the northerly side of Gracie, it's actually a pretty complicated. I want to make sure that everyone has a clear understanding. So, so right now Gracie Lane is a, um, a rural about twenty, twenty-two foot wide road. It's got a couple of speed bumps on there. Um, we're not aware of any, uh, traffic issues on Gracie or excessive parking. Um, this project is not anticipated to add any traffic or parking on Gracie Lane. All that being said, if there was no parking on the north side of Gracie, and for some reason there was some event or something changed in the future that, that allowed or that, that attracted people to park on Gracie. If there's no parking on the north side, they're all going to park on the south side. And I don't think that's the intent of the residents to have people park on the south side. Um, so that's the first thing. The second thing to, to remember is that this project isn't proposing to widen Gracie Lane. So it's an existing twenty to twenty-foot pavement. Um, after this project, they're going to put some landscaping, a sound wall, a flush curb, but that pavement is still going to be around twenty plus feet. There isn't going to be enough room on the north side to park. There's actually going to be a, a roadside ditch. So unless you have a four-by-four vehicle, I don't anticipate people parking on the north side of Gracie even after this development. All that being said, you know, we can certainly look at traffic impacts and parking impacts well after this project is developed. Putting up a couple of no parking signs is a pretty easy thing either for the applicant to do or for us in Public Works. It's, it's a pretty, it's a, it's a relatively low cost thing to do.
Okay. And the dead end, I mean, it is a dead end, so we could put a dead end sign there. So people.
Yes, we can.
I guess people turn down there thinking it's going somewhere and it doesn't go anywhere, and then they have to turn around.
Right. Uh, I would recommend we, we hold up any signage until all the improvements on Gracie is done so they don't get knocked down or destroyed by construction.
Okay.
I, I think, um, the, a, a, a dead end sign there.
Okay. And then, um, the wall around the buyer retention, is that a solid wall around everywhere? Or does it have a gate into the, into the development? And is it a lot gate or is it an open gate? Like, I know that we, we weren't settled on that when we met at LED. They were going to research that, the whole gate situation.
Okay, it's, it's my understanding, and this is me looking at the landscape plans. Okay, so it's a, it's a rectangle, roughly rectangle. The north side is a sound wall, the west side is a sound wall, the south and the east along Gracie and Lone Oak are going to be the, um, split rail fence. Um, we did ask for some access gates or access roads, and it's, it's really for, for maintenance. Um, and a great example is what happened, and I believe the mayor, council member, you may be familiar, this was probably eight, seven or eight years ago when we had that really large rainstorm and just south of here at the caper base, is it caper basin? I believe it's a caper basin. Yeah, it actually, it flooded, it overflowed and flooded because a lot of debris got caught in the outlet basin. And part of the reason it flooded is that we couldn't get vehicles to get all the way to where the, the inlet was. And so one of the lessons learned from that is we need to make sure we have vehicular access to all storm drain, um, for maintenance purposes.
Okay. My next question, the strawberry trees, do they drop fruit?
Uh, good question. I don't know the answer to that. I'll defer to Bruce or Parks to, to answer that.
I, I think, um, the residents would prefer a non-fruit dropping tree just because it gets messy, like I, and yeah, and it brings actually rodents. So is there any way to substitute that strawberry tree to something that's not fruit dropping?
Again, I'll defer, defer to Parks. I imagine there are other, uh, tree species that we could put in its place that if, if it's a fruit dropping tree that we could place.
Okay.
Good evening, council. May I jump in there?
Oh, hey, Aaron.
Just a quick, quick answer to that. Absolutely. They are a fruiting tree. They don't produce a lot of fruit, but they're a big, almost like a sycamore ball type fruit. Um, birds love them absolutely. It's an absolutely gorgeous plant, but there are some better alternatives. And if I recall from one of the emails, the residents really liked the landscaping on O'Hara, which has the fruitless plums on it, which would probably be a good alternative. Um, and then the oaks as well, but that's much larger variety. But, um, we could certainly, once it goes into plan check and get, get more, um, down into the types of plant that could be replaced.
Okay.
Wait, can I do a follow-up on that with Aaron? Aaron, I mean, I got a fruitless plum in my front yard. It has fruit and, and it is a mess. I mean, it is beautiful when it blooms. It's beautiful what you, just the color of it, but it, it does drop fruit.
Yes, and there's, there's products out there that we use mostly on olives, because olives will tell you they're a non-producing olive. And next thing, next season, you've got olives. Um, but we can inhibit the, the fruit. Um, if it does happen to take, we can certainly inhibit the, the fruit with some products.
And if I can, I, I could, uh, share the screen with you regarding the EVA gate. Let me break that here. And it's similar to the gate that was sent to us, um, the photo, the image of the EVA gate. So that's the typical standard EVA gate in the city.
Okay, thank you, Crystal. And the last one is just about the pest plan. Can, um, could Shea Homes, Mr. David Best, share the pest plan, like how, what their plan is? Because I said, they said they had a plan. And I think the residents were just worried, wondering what exactly the plan is for pest abatement. Because they're afraid of all the, um, that are going to happen when they start digging up the dirt.
Yes, I can defer to David Best with the pest management plan. That's something that he would need to do before grading. So I'll let him answer that question, um, when we're done with all the questions and stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Meyer?
Thank you. Um, outside of what councilmember, um, Mendoza was asking on behalf of the residents, I actually just have one simple question, and that is, in reading the agenda packet, it looked to be that, um, that Shea has answered the concerns of LED council members. Um, and item by item, there was a list of every concern that was listed and every response to it. And so I wanted to actually ask for our LED council members' response to that. Do you feel like, or, and staff can answer that as well. Do you feel that the concerns addressed at LED were responded to fairly by the applicant? Okay, look forward to hearing more about that. Thank you. And this is for the public because I can't talk to either one of the LED members about this because I wasn't on LED and, uh, Brown Act kind of thing.
Councilmember Rary?
Um, these questions are actually for the applicant. Um, so if, uh, the, the first, um, the first one was regarding, um, well, on page two fifty-eight of the agenda, in the diagram, it shows the water and electricity meters panels, um, are located in the front of the house before the front door. So what that means is that residents need to walk past those meters before they get to their front door, um, and their guests as well. So how difficult is it? Because I, I asked this question before, if we could move those so they weren't inside, uh, unsightly. And, um, you assured me that we could. So how can we move them ten feet farther and past the door so that people don't have to walk past those ugly things as they walk into their, their new homes?
Would you want the applicant to answer that?
Yes, I, I said these were for the applicant.
Later. Okay. Is Mr. Best on the line?
Yes, he is.
To be promoted to panelist.
Okay, how about now? Okay, great. So if you can hear me, um, that's a good question, Councilmember Rary. Um, the, I think you're talking about the dry utility connections, which is the PG and E meter. Um, and generally the solar, uh, disconnect is in the same location. Those obviously have to be accessible, so we can't put them behind fences. Um, and they need to be, uh, in, on the garage wall. And so because of the nature of the duet units, um, you know, that, that where the doors load on the side, uh, tech, uh, technically the side of the house, even though in a couple of instances, the side of the house actually fronts the street, depending on how it's plotted. Um, there's not a lot of of opportunity to screen those behind anything that's going to, you know, uh, hide them completely from view. We can, uh, look at some options to, um, you know, kind of downplay it with maybe some landscaping. Um, but unfortunately, yeah, and it depending on which unit you're looking at, that those utility connections and meters have to be exposed.
Okay, right, thank you. And, um, when we met regarding the bio detention, uh, bio retention, um, you know, I, I'd asked for enhanced landscape plan then, and what I expected was actual landscape plans, not just a bunch of dots that's supposed to be something, but even when you look at the list of plants, it doesn't designate what those plants will actually be in there. Um, nor does it, I mean, it, it doesn't make it so that that will be how it's landscaped. Um, which was my big concern about this and the residents. I mean, they'd like the beautiful landscape um, pictures that I brought in. And while those are, are shown with the landscape plans, it, it doesn't. I, I don't, I, I was hoping that you would actually create a landscape plan and not just, here's a list, and that's it.
Yeah, so the, the short answer to that is that, uh, uh, an actual landscape plan with irrigation and plant material and spacing and and, and a constructible landscape design is, is a pretty major effort. And so, just like improvement plans, you know, we, we don't, we don't, you know, spend the hundreds of thousands of dollars on, on design work until we actually have an entitlement in place. So what, what we've given you is the, the concept plan, and we've shown you pictures of, of, of what you like, uh, which was an existing detention basin in your city. And it's fully our intent to build it exactly the same way. So, um, yeah, I understand that it's, it's the drawings that presented to you are conceptual. But I can, uh, commit to you that the intent is that we're going to build it the, the very, very similar to what was, what was shown previously.
Okay, all right, great. And let's see. I think that was it, since, um, Councilmember Mendoza had already asked about all of the, the items that the, the residents had wanted. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Um, all of my questions were asked and answered, uh, already. So, uh, if there are no further uh, questions of staff, as far as clarifying questions, at this time, we will open public comment. Margaret.
I believe we have the applicant that could go first for ten minutes. I received written public comments on this item that will be shown on the speaker screen. If you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand using the Zoom feature. I'll call your name if provided and unmute you to speak. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. And was the applicant going to speak for ten minutes?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Margaret. I'll, I'll speak for just a minute, um, and reserve my time for, for the end to, to make sure that there's no questions that need to be clarified. But, um, uh, I think, um, Crystal did a good job of presenting the project. Um, we've, we've gone through a few iterations here with, with, uh, the uh, City Council, Planning Commission and LED. So, um, I, I think I'll just kind of leave it at that. And, uh, if there are any additional questions or clarifications, please feel free to ask. I'll be, I'll be here to answer anything you have.
Thank you. I do have one hand raised for public comment. Let me reset the timer. I have Danny Dorman. Mr. Dorman, go ahead.
Great, thank you. I honestly was going to be positive and thank Shea for the effort. Um, working with the neighbors from what I've heard. But then there was the word that kind of threw me off, and that was intent. Um, now I hearken back Shea to your project you have going on at Kendrick, where you're charging people for fences. Now, I think everyone thought you had the intent of putting up fences. But you didn't, and you don't. And there are people who, if you go to your own HOA, you'll hear about people complaining about animals and people encroaching on their yard and all this and that. So, uh, council, I would say, don't take intent, get it in writing. Whatever it is, the, you know, the understanding of spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on plans. Okay, I get that. But once this is a go, just like those doggone fences, uh, once it's a go, we're locked out. So if there is anything that they say they intend to do, get it in writing so that it doesn't become intent, it becomes actuality. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Keith Schaefer, followed by RT. Mr. Schaefer, go ahead.
Thank you very much, um, everybody, um, Planning Commission, LED Committee, council members, and Shea Homes. Um, this has been an arduous thing, um, something that I don't do every day. I appreciate everybody's efforts. Um, I'll kind of go down my list and hope that, uh, Mr. Best can respond to the vast majority of them. Um, number one, the EVA. Um, the fence that's proposed, or I should say the gate that's proposed is more of a triangle. The photo that I, uh, uh, sent in to you guys, and, and maybe Crystal can put it on the, the, um, the screen. It's more of a rectangle, um, and it's just a little bit more attractive. Has a two-rail, two-by-eight, um, pressure-treated fence, uh, and then there's landscaping around it. I think it's more attractive. It's what's on Adams Lane, and I think it will just, um, uh, mirror what's already present in various other areas. Um, number two- Number two, the wall details. David, thank you very much. You've listened to us and you have put the wall that we asked for with the cap, with the caps and with the, the columns. So thank you for that. Number three, just as a suggestion, the flag lot properties, they have 20-foot driveways. It appears approximately 20 feet in between the house and then another 20-foot driveway. Those poor people are going to have to pull into each other's driveways just to back out of the driveway. I certainly wouldn't appreciate that if I spent a million dollars on a house plus. The bio-retention pond, I think, looks great. Thank you, Councilman Rary, for your, for your suggestions. I think that we've come up with a great plan, and I think it'll look beautiful. One question I had with that was, Crystal put up a, a photo of what was proposed with the red dots showing where the concrete wall. And the access road is actually on the opposite side of the wall. To me, if it's going to be on the opposite side of the wall, then it's probably not necessary, and I'm hoping we can get rid of it. Third, or excuse me, fourth, and finally, rodent control. This has been sidestepped a few times. It's incredibly important. The last project that went, went on surrounding our areas costs us thousands of dollars in repairs. So it's incredibly important, and I hope that we can request it to be in writing and approved so that it is a responsible way of getting rid of the rodents. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is RT. RT, go ahead. It looks like RT may have put their hand down. I don't know if they were trying to speak. RT no longer has their hand raised. Nope, there he goes. RT, go ahead. I'm not sure that RT is there. I now have another hand raised. Michael Jensen. Mr. Jensen, go ahead.
I'd just like to thank everybody that's worked on projects, especially Keith Schaefer, representing our territory, and the fact that so far we've asked for, gotten pretty much everything we've asked for. The only thing is, I'd really like to make sure there's a dead-end sign and no parking on the side of Gracie Lane. That's all.
Thank you. I have no additional speakers with their hands raised. Oh, I do have another hand raised. Julie Schaefer, go ahead.
Okay, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I want to thank the council members and the city, and also David Best. All of the residents here really appreciate listening to all of our comments, reading all of our emails, our letters. You know, I hope we haven't been too pesty, but this is just, as we've stated, it's just a permanent change in our view and our lifestyle. And so we're just trying to, you know, maintain whatever we can, just a little bit of the country atmosphere that we have. So that's why we've been so persistent, and we're really thankful that, that everyone has worked with us and is really caring to, to help us keep some of that. As far as the end of Gracie Lane, we love, thankful for the enhanced landscaping, that's really nice. Of course, we would have preferred the wall to extend, but we understand that's going to restrict the visual access for emergency vehicles. So the photo we sent in today that had the metal EVA gate, and then it had the two-rail wood fencing on each side, is actually on the corner of Lone Oak and Grant, there's two of them there, and then there's on Grant and Adams. So we're asking the developer if he can put, in addition to the enhanced landscaping, from his masonry wall, can he put the two-rail wood fence up to the metal gate? Just so it's consistent, and the park looks like that across the street as well. And also asking to maybe add a tree in that corner, just again, to kind of block the view, make it look more private, and signage on both sides of the gate saying it's emergency access, and it's, people will be towed if they park there. The trees, it looks like they added some extra trees. We definitely just want as many trees as we can, but yes, we are opposed to the strawberry trees just because of the messy fruit. So we're hoping, and we were hoping to have a landscape plan like Karen is saying. So we don't want it to get landscaping, and then we have half the amount of trees that are shown, and like half the amount of shrubs. So oak trees would be wonderful, hopefully at least as many as are on the, in the agenda packet. And hopefully some vines and shrubs. We want it, David did say that we could be involved in that process, so we want to know how and when we can be involved in that process with the landscaping. How does that happen? If he could answer that. And then lastly, really quick, I don't know if I can fit it in, but on the notice of public hearing, there's a note here that says the project will likely likewise seek a modification of the density transition. I hope that doesn't have anything to do with changing anything on the lot sizes that are next, that are across from us, the big ones.
The speaker's timer has expired. I do have another hand raised. Cenziana Todor. Cenziana, go ahead.
Hi, good evening again. I am here to speak in support of all additional requests and adjustments that have been suggested by the residents on Gracie Lane and Lone Oak Road. They, we have five more families that I'm speaking in their name tonight, supporting all the required requests that Julie and Keith outlined previously. Also, I do have concerns about this plan, given the fact that this, the agenda does not reflect the final, final design. I, I'm not really sure how you, as the city council members, will be comfortable voting on and approving something that's not final and includes all the requirements and all the requests that the LUD Commission and previous city council meetings have been outlining. And it's just not updated as, you know, it's been discussed all along. So I would have wanted to see very clearly in the first few pages of the agenda, this is what's up for approval, very clearly, without leaving any room for, you know, controversy or confusion and so on. In regards with the landscaping, like I said, the plans are not very clear. There've been discussions on somewhat of a layer landscape design with strawberry, followed by the trees. The strawberry trees that have, are proposed and mentioned in the agenda, they're super messy. They're very wiry type of trees that do not provide very good architectural features, like, let's say, an oak tree or, or any other trees that we see in the surrounding park. So I would suggest that you ask for more clarification on that than possibly replacement of those proposed trees. Other than that, I do appreciate all the changes that the developer has been willing to make. And I think they've been willing participants. However, again, I want to express my disappointment on the lack of clarity and precision of what's presented today in the agenda for your review and approval. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional hands raised.
Thank you. At this time, then, we will close public comment. And do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to the public. I'll second.
And a second roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Hi.
Mayor Bryant?
Hi.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, at this time, then, we will go to council discussion.
Um, I, it seems like this gate is kind of a big deal with everyone. So I'm sharing my screen because I'm sharing the one that they keep referring to. The gate that they're putting out, it doesn't look like it's flanked by anything on either side. Is there a way we could do, kind of to match the bio-retention, like a fence on each side, and close the area? So, because it sounds like it's going to be like a freestanding gate and nothing on either side. So is there anything we can do so that it matches the one that's down the street? The design of the gate, not being a triangle but a rectangle, and then, you know, the gates around the side?
Is that a question, is that a question for me, Councilmember Mendoza?
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, David, if you want to address, is that something we can do there?
Yeah, I don't have a, I don't have a problem doing that at all, because that's, you know, I, I don't think that's going to impede any site distances. It's, it's a pretty simple improvement you can put along the edge. And, you know, we can terminate the gate on, on the other side, at least for one panel of that fence. It'll go beyond our property line, but if that helps out, we don't, we don't have a problem doing that.
Thank you. That's on, it sounds to me, if everyone else, that's kind of what we're hearing from the residents, they kind of want to see some. So thank you so much for that. I'll let, you know, everyone else, go ahead.
Councilmember Rary?
Um, yes, Mr. Best, as far as, you know, we talked about the fact of the, there's only one of the duets that actually fronts the street for, and, and would it be possible, instead of doing the craftsmen there, doing the, the Spanish style instead, or the Mediterranean? Because it's, it's a more substantial front entryway, and it would then take away from, from the, the other, from, from the tackiness of those panels.
Yeah, if you're, if you're asking if we could do the Spanish elevation on lots 26 and 27, which is where the, the, the house actually occurs on the corner, we have to do that.
Okay, perfect, thank you. That's it.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I don't know who would answer this question, but I know that there's been a couple, it's been brought up a couple of times in regards to the plan when it comes to landscaping. And I know you've mentioned that, that that's something, I guess, that happens after this process, or how does that work? Can you be more clear about that? Because it sounds like people are concerned that we're saying there's going to be a specific type of landscape. But then again, after this is all said and done, is it actually going to happen? Or we would need to get that in writing. How does that work? Is this the normal practice?
Well, yeah, I mean, normal is an interesting word when it comes to land development, but, you know, in, in my experience, you know, there's a whole plan review process that happens with your staff. So, you know, once, once we get, you know, approvals and entitlements from you, the policymakers, then we go into construct, construction drawings with the hard design for, for everything. And that has to go through your staff and get approved with your parks district, your engineering department, your planning department. So I think this is really a matter of, you know, if, if your, if your staff has clear direction on what you're looking for, then they're the ones that are going to hold us accountable when we do the actual working drawings. And if, you know, that's something that the neighborhood wants to be involved in. I, I don't have a problem with that at all when we're going through the working drawings. If we want to have a, you know, a powwow with the, with the neighborhood, once we kind of have more blacklined and detailed working drawings for these improvements that are going to affect them, we can certainly bring them in and make sure that that's meets their needs.
Appreciate it.
Councilmember Meyer?
Thank you. Just a final clarification on, a few residents mentioned things that they were unclear about, that they would like some formal clarification on. And of course, we're hearing publicly in this, in this public hearing tonight, the answers to those questions. But I'm wondering if that, it, does that have to be put in writing? Can this be considered a public hearing that will be a formal commitment on some of these items? If that's a clear question. For Mr. Best.
Yeah, well, I think, I think I might want to let your staff answer that on, on how they intend on.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, approaching the project. It's obviously our, our intent, and, and I'm, I'm sorry if that's the wrong word, but it's our intent to make sure that we live up to what we've been describing here, both, you know, in conceptual drawings and in, in conversations. So, you know, there's a, I, I assume there'll be a pretty rigorous process of going through plan reviews.
Thank you for your input, Crystal. Can you explain staff?
Sure. And just to add on to that, the final landscape plans for bio-retention and for the rest of the development does require, these are preliminary plans. So there is a list of native and drought-tolerant plants that the applicant can use for these locations. And so once that's finalized, we would request a final landscape plan that were reviewed by staff prior to any kind of construction. And as you said before, as David Best said before, he can work with the residents there, working off of the plant list and tree list, before he submits to the city for a review for the final plan.
And we can, we can have staff make sure that that engagement with the community does happen?
Yes.
Okay. And then my final question is something I know we've discussed in the past, and I, I don't recall what the answer was. So hopefully somebody can confirm the issue with rodents and the pest control, since that came up a couple of times as well?
Yeah, I, maybe I can, can address that. We.
Thank you.
I, I don't know that I've ever really done a rodent control plan. You know, we have strategies for rodent control that, that we employ every time we do a grading project, because, you know, the neighborhood is right, you know, once you start digging up soil, you, you do disturb a bunch of critters that are living there. But in the interests of, of, you know, trust in the community, we can certainly prepare something. I just, like, you know, again, that's something that we would submit to the staff, and we can provide also to the neighborhood before we start grading. Is a, you know, a pretty detailed layout of, of what we're going to do. But it, but at the end of the day, one of the best things is, is for us just to be available. And so, you know, we'll provide everybody that's, all the interested parties, your staff, as well as the neighborhood, phone numbers for our site superintendents and myself. And if there's ever any issues where they're starting to see rodents jumping around, you know, just give us a call, and, and we will have guys that are, you know, just a phone call away to get out there and take care of it as soon as we can. But, but I will, if, if there's interest in that, I will create a plan and a document that your staff can have that will is accountable for for rodent control. That shouldn't be too hard.
Thank you. That's all of my questions. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Best, did you have any final wrap-up that you would like to, to speak about? You saved most of your time for the end, so giving that opportunity.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Brian. I appreciate that. I, I think we talked about a lot of the things that, that I wanted to make sure we addressed. We, we talked about the rodent control. As far as the trees are concerned, you know, we're open to anything. I mean, especially the trees along Gracie, it's not necessarily, you know, it affects the, the Gracie Lane and Lone Oak neighbors far more than it does us. So whatever the city and the, and the neighborhood want, provided I don't have to import the trees from Italy, we'd be happy, we'd be happy to provide for them. So we can work with your staff and the neighborhood about, you know, what, what species is appropriate there. And then as far as signage is concerned, you know, I've been talking with your engineering staff. Signage is a pretty simple thing to do, so whatever is appropriate for, you know, dead ends and, and no parking, if that becomes an issue, you know, we can include in our, in our signing and striping plans. And then, I think that was it. Yep, that's everything that I had on my list. So I appreciate your time, and any other questions, I'm here for.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Well, if there's no further council, uh, discussion, I have need of one of three. Oh, Councilmember Mendoza. Okay.
I was going to make the motion if you were ready.
Okay, we're, I'm ready for a motion.
Okay. Everyone's okay with this, because I want all to be okay with it. Um, as detailed in the staff report adopt a resolution, um, is it the right one? One of three? I have to do three of them. The mitigate declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting plan.
We have first. So part, motion number one, we have a first. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Hi.
Mayor Bryant?
Hi.
Motion carries unanimous?
Okay, motion number two.
Motion two of three, as detailed in the staff report adopt a resolution approving vesting tangent subdivision map nine, three, nine, five, three, five.
Before, before we do a second on this, is this where we would, um, include the change of the elevation or is that on the next one? Um, for,
Should be just,
twenty six and twenty seven. For lot numbers twenty six and twenty seven.
Good evening, council. Through the mayor, I've been taking notes of your direction and I've got a page to share that you could look at to see if I've captured what you had in mind. If you wouldn't mind if I share my screen for a moment, councilmember?
Okay.
Okay. Give me just one second. All right, can you see the word document that I've got here?
Can you make it a little bit bigger? Is that okay?
Can you see that?
Yeah.
Okay. So the underlined language would be the new language.
Do we want to put anything in there about the landscaping and working with the residents? That's the only one that I have. I mean,
Yeah, the, the trees, I, I was going to add that, uh, as far as the trees along Gracie and Lone Oak to work with, uh, work with staff in the neighborhood.
So there is a condition number twenty. Um, let's see if I can. No, no, that won't work. Um, there is a condition number twenty on packet page two thirty that addresses the landscape plans with regard to Gracie Lane and Lone Oak Road. And with the permission of council, um, we can add language directing staff to reach out to a representative of the neighborhood prior to approving a final landscape plan, if that would be agreeable.
It works. We're just going to add that. Yeah.
Okay.
Councilmember Rary?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll, I'll add that. Um, I don't know if, if you want to ask staff if I've captured these in a way that's practical for implementation. We haven't had a chance to discuss between ourselves. So, Crystal, do you have any input on whether anything that I've prepared here would be infeasible for staff to follow up on?
The only thing that I have is regarding the landscape plan. The applicant was provided a list of the trees that, that's applicable and in conformance with, um, the city's native and drought tolerant plants and the, the county stormwater control requirements. So that would be something that the applicant would need to use when they're picking out the appropriate plant species and tree species in the landscape plan. And I thought they were going to be able to work with the neighbors on that um, before they submit anything to us for a final landscape plan.
So just so we're all clear, um, how exactly is the council envisioning the applicant satisfying this condition? Is it reaching out to one neighbor as a representative of the neighborhood? Reaching out to multiple may be confusing because everyone may have different ideas and we want to make sure we can write this in a way that's enforceable and understandable by everyone. Um, so can you provide us with some clarity there?
Uh, I think that, I mean, it seems like Keith Safer has been, he's been kind of speaking on behalf of everyone. Maybe we can ask him if he wants to be the contact. And we'll go through him and then he can work talking to his neighbors. I don't know if he's still on the line. He is. So I don't know if he wants to raise this, if he volunteers for that. If not, then I don't know. Do we talk to all of them or not?
Okay, so, um,
Great. And if he wants to volunteer for that job.
In contact with a resident.
We're writing this in there. Can we ask him real quick before he's okay with that?
If, if it's okay with you, I think we would accept staff direction in that regard and not put his name in a document. So he doesn't have to have his name listed in a public document that's affiliated with the project. Is that agreeable?
Yeah, that's fine. So just, okay, just a resident.
So permittee shall be in contact with the resident of the neighborhood to discuss the final landscape plan before city approval.
Perfect. Thank you.
Can we say, uh, resident representative? So we are clear whoever it is that we, that is speaking to them is a representative of the neighborhood? Thank you.
Okay.
Um,
I, I, I apologize for the interruption, but, um, uh, Ms. Wazinski, I, I think it's important that under fifteen, that we're not obligated to, to pay anybody for property rights. Um, I, I believe that the extension of that fence outside of our property boundaries would be in city right of way, so I'm, I'm not certain.
This is a useful, um, clarification here, council. I don't believe it was your intention to, um, impose any additional financial burden on the applicant here. And, um, we can make sure that that's expressed here. Without.
And that really has to do with property rights. We, we just don't want to be in a situation where we're, yeah.
Council, does this look acceptable to you for the additional or changed conditions for the subdivision map resolution?
Yes, and I'll second it then.
We have a first and a second roll call vote.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Hi.
Mayor Bryant?
Hi.
Motion carries unanimous?
Motion three.
And, yeah, and the last one, uh, motion three of three, as detailed in the staff report adopt a resolution approving design review number twenty dash zero, zero, three as conditioned. Do we have to put any of the, of your notes in here? With the modifications listed in Katie with, with Sinsky's sheet.
And if you don't mind, if I can just ask for your eyes on that real quickly to make sure I've captured it accurately. This had to do with the elevation change for the early California Spanish, um, use on the duets. And I'll share my screen again. Let's see. So this is the design review resolution. It would add a new clause.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second roll, roll vote, please.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Hi.
Mayor Bryant? Motion carries unanimous?
Okay. Thank you. And I want to thank, uh, everyone in the neighborhood, as well as Mr. Best and the, uh, lead committee and staff for all of your great work on this. I know there was a lot of detail. Uh, but I think this is something that's really going to be a, a benefit to our, our families and our community and our city. So thank you all very much. Uh, at this time, we will move into item C two. Uh, this matter pertains to the annexation of territory into landscape and lighting district number nineteen dash three. And, uh, Erin Wandon will provide the staff report here.
Yes, good evening once again, mayor and city council members. Uh, in accordance with Landscape and Lighting Act of nineteen seventy-two and Proposition two eighteen, this is the final step in the approval process to annex territory to landscape and lighting assessment district number nineteen dash three as annexation number six. If annexation number six is approved, an annual assessment can be levied on parcels corresponding to the Scortino Ranch Marketplace project located on the southeast corner of Brentwood Boulevard and Sand Creek Road. These assessments will fund the cost to operate and maintain streetlights, landscaping, parks, trails, and open space areas that benefit the project. This district includes multiple benefit zones to streamline the annexation of future non-residential and multifamily developments. Due to the varying degrees of operation, maintenance, and benefit boundaries for each improvement type throughout this district, seventeen specific benefit zones have been created. Each benefit zone has a maximum assessment rate that can be increased each subsequent fiscal year by the annual change in the Consumer Price Index. The total maximum revenue that can be generated from the parcels that comprise annexation number six is eleven thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventy-two cents in fiscal year two thousand, twenty-two, twenty-three dollars. The annexation of territory to the existing district does require property owner voter approval before city council can finalize the annexation. Notices and ballots were mailed to the affected property owners as required by Proposition two eighteen. The ballots can be opened and tabulated by the city clerk after the close of the public input portion of the public hearing this evening. If the affected property, property owners are in favor of the annexation to the district, city council would then be able to adopt the attached resolution, which would give your approval of the final engineer's report and confirm annexation number six to landscape and lighting assessment district number nineteen dash three. Myself and the city's consultant are available for any questions you might have. Thank you.
Any clarifying questions of staff at this time? Seeing none, we will open, uh, public comment. Margaret?
I received no written public comments on this item. If you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand using the Zoom feature and I'll call your name if provided and mute you to speak. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired.
Margaret, before we open public comment at this time, I will, um, open the public hearing and now public comment if there are any hands.
And I have no hands raised.
Okay, this time we'll close public comment. Uh, the election in this matter is hereby called. And are there any additional ballots to be submitted?
There's no additional ballots to be submitted.
Okay, uh, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So my?
Second.
First and a second roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez? Mayor Bryant?
Hi.
Motion carries unanimous?
Okay, are there any, uh, additional questions or, uh, comments regarding this item? If not, uh, I need a motion to confirm annexation number six uh, with a simple majority property owner approval weighted by assessment amount. Uh, we have a first.
Second.
And a second roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Hi.
Mayor Bryant?
Hi.
Motion carries unanimous?
At this time, I'll ask, uh, the city clerk to tabulate the ballots and read the results.
My apologies. All ballots have been reserved with a one hundred percent affirmative vote.
Thank you. Uh, at this time, do I have a motion, uh, regarding this item?
As detailed in, I'll make motion as detailed in the staff report adopt a resolution ordering the annexation of territory to landscape and lighting assessment district number nineteen dash three.
Okay.
Have a first and a second roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rary?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Hi.
Mayor Bryant?
Hi.
Motion carries unanimous?
Okay, thank you. This time we will move into business items. Uh, item D one pertains to the P A one.
Mr. Mayor, before we move into that, I did leave notes in the other room, so if we could take a couple minute break, so I can gather those notes.
Uh, if that is okay with council, we'll take a five minute break.
Thank you.
Thank you. Reconvene at eight forty-five. Okay, we are back in session. And this time we will go to item D one that pertains to updating PA one's specific plan. And Darren Gale, our assistant city manager, and Josh Ewan, our director of economic development, will report on this item.
Evening. Mayor and councilmembers. To share my PowerPoint real quick. Great. Well, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. It's a pleasure to be before you this evening to talk about the PA one Innovation Center. Just, you know, real briefly, as it relates to the PA one specific plan. Any changes to the specific plan does require a specific plan amendment, and it also does require a rezone. Most recently, we met on August ninth where the council gave us some guidance and direction on a variety of issues and we went through in detail on the land use tables. And so tonight, we're before you prior to going to the planning commission. So we have noticed a planning commission meeting for September twentieth. So our current goal is to take what, after tonight, whatever additional direction that the council provides us to take that to the planning commission on September thirtieth, sorry, September twentieth. And then we would be back before the city council of the planning commission was to recommend it moving forward. We'd be back for the city council on October eleventh for a first reading and October twenty-fifth for a second reading. At our, at our last meeting, one of the biggest items that was kind of left where there was some additional questions was related to alternative, the land use plan, alternative B. A councilmember Mendoza provided us with an Excel sheet and we, we've reviewed that Excel sheet and we've tried our best to implement what the direction was from the council that evening, but at the same time trying to ensure that we are not in conflict with the current state law. So I want to go through a couple of the changes. First, I'll go through on the map. And then I have the Excel sheet that has some of the numbers. So we can go over visually and then those who like the data, we can, we can go through it that way. So first, on alternative B, first was up here just to the west or just north of the McCallum Trail on the far west side of the plan, we had some ECLI properties. After discussion internally, the idea of there possibly being some ECLI developed immediately adjacent to regional, regional commercial and north of McCallum Trail seemed highly unlikely. So first, as part of this proposal, we've made a change and made all regional commercial or we're recommending all regional commercial north of the McCallum Trail. So as you know, all of this site is developed. This is, is undeveloped. So that is one of the first changes. The second change is right in here. So the the purple is ECLI and the brown is Transit Village. So we removed some, some ECLI to replace some of the Transit Village between, so south of McCallum Trail and along the highway and immediately adjacent.
Do you mean the Transit Village and not, you keep saying ECLI for the?
You are correct, councilmember. Thank you for the clarification. So the, the ECLI being Employment Center, Light Industrial is the purple and the brown is Transit Village. So this is alternative B and alternative C, we added additional Transit Village on this side. And we reduced some, we reduced a little bit of the ECLI. And then the last change is with the residential piece. So we eliminated a small amount of, of the HDR, Josh, did I get that correctly?
Thank you, Darren. So this is your multifamily, very high density residential. And that's a mid-density product that's residential only.
Okay. So we reduced some of that and then added additional ECLI down here on, on this side. So south of Innovation Drive and south of kind of the entryway of the, of the specific plan. As it relates to the specific numbers and how does that add up? Here are the, the two scenarios kind of side by side. So you can see exactly where the acreage was on alternative B and where the acreage was on alternative C. One of the, one of the biggest things that we had to try to make sure that, that we met was this the development possibility for, for future growth of the two thousand and forty unit numbers. And also based upon staff review, we don't believe that we can take credit for an over construction of the two hundred and eighty-eight units above the, the middle level of density for the Amber Lane project. So that, that developed out at two hundred and eighty-eight, which was higher than than, than what was, than what is the, the middle? The, I'm going blank on my words tonight. I'm, I'm sorry. So the, the mid-range of densities. So sorry about that. So, so these are, are the, the, the two side by side. The next items that we went through is we went through all of the land use tables. These are the updated land use tables. All these changes we made as, at our last meeting. And I hope that so we included everything, both Josh, myself went back and watched the council meeting over again to ensure that we did our best to include everything that the council made a motion on and that there is three people in agreement on moving forward. So those are the two land use tables. And then I can answer any questions. I have some other tables if, if you need me to pull up the Excel sheets where we can talk about it. But I know that there might be a lot of questions and I'll go back to, I can either stay here on the Excel sheet or I can go back to the map, whichever one the council would like to work off of.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Can we go back to the uses you said where at least three people were in agreement?
Yeah, these ones?
Yeah, I thought we were going through it and if, if the motion was given by three, then that's what passed. It's not going, I I'm confused about if three people were in agreement. So which ones did we want changed that there's only two people in agreement?
That, sorry. So councilmember, these, these are the ones that I believe that there was full agreement. We, we moved them across the board. At least three councilmembers said yes, change it. There's nothing in here that has less than, than three councilmembers that were asking for a change. And, and we made all of these changes right during that meeting and then we went back to confirm that we had included everything.
Did you have to make any modifications after you went back?
We did not make any modifications to the, the land use table, no.
Okay. So there wasn't something like you had it, but then like, wait a minute, you went and watched it and you changed it?
Yeah, yeah. Thank, thank you very much. No, there, there was nothing that, that we made any additional changes to based upon where we thought that, you know, that, that we did not capture your intent. And then number two, there was no changes to this. I'm at a staff level where it's like, well, we disagree, you know, here's where we want to make a change. So we think we got it. But I, I want to make sure and, and present it to the city council so that, that's, you know, that's what we presented.
Okay. Um. I am not in agreement with the comment about the housing. The EIR was done and Sequel, all that was done with twenty forty as the ask, correct?
That is correct.
And now we don't get credit for two hundred and eighty-eight, you're saying?
So we only, as it relates to that, so I know Jennifer's on the line and she can talk more clearly about how we get credit for land as it relates to rezones and maybe she could come on and, and help answer this question if she's available.
Yeah. Because when the consultant was on, real quick, just real quick, when the consultant was on the other day, he said anything over twenty forty would need an EIR memo amendment. Depending on the amount, that would be the severity of what had to be done. So he said the other day, twenty forty is our target. Right?
That is correct as it relates to the EIR and what was approved under the EIR. So anything over that, there would have to be some additional Sequel analysis.
Go ahead, Jennifer, start off that.
So in terms of what gets counted, we, we do get RENA credit for anything that is above the mid-range. And we get full credit in terms of our annual progress report and our RENA report. However, in terms of reviewing the project against SB three thirty, we have to look at each site individually against its overall development capacity. So that doesn't transfer between sites once a project is developed. So we do not get credit for the over development or development above the midpoint in terms of SB three thirty analysis for future capacity. But we do get credit for it for our annual housing element report and RENA.
Okay. So what is the midpoint? What was the midpoint for Adams Lane?
Thirty, or that one, it was a high density, so it would be fifteen dwelling units per acre. And I believe it developed at twenty units per acre.
So you're saying it was two sixteen, they did two eighty-eight, so I have to make up. I still need seventy-two is what you're saying. Seven, so I get credit for the two sixteen at midpoint because that was on that lot. That's done. But I need seventy-two somewhere else. Is that what you're saying?
No, the, the seventy-two, you, you just, you just get credit for the, the midpoint in terms of the overall development capacity.
Okay. So then I'm, so two sixteen, that's what I'm getting credit for.
Correct.
But then I would have to do two thousand and forty.
Minus the two sixteen.
So then you're saying our new target? So many windows open. The one eight two four.
Yeah, I had one eight two one. So yeah, it's, it's generally that, yes.
I can go with one eight two one, I'm fine.
Yeah.
So what other cities has this happened in that is like, where, where would I find this in the code?
So it's, it's multiple places. When we look at SB three thirty, SB three thirty is based off of development capacity based off of just the raw acreage. For SB three thirty analysis, what we are going to look at is the future development capacity. So in terms of that analysis, the Amber Lane project for that review really should be stripped out of the acreage altogether because it doesn't have future development capacity. It's already developed. So in, in terms of our analysis for future capacity, it should just be our vacant underutilized land. So we.
Forty, the twenty forty minus the two eighty-eight.
So yeah, so eighteen twenty-one, we need to show that we have development capacity for approximately one thousand eight hundred and twenty-one units. Based on, on that, that the previous city council meetings, I believe it was in June, staff heard council's recommendations to, to make some modifications and increase our commercial acreages from what was originally adopted in two thousand and eighteen. Based on that recommendation, recommendation by city council, staff analyzed what we determined to be a realistic capacity for the developable sites, including the Transit Village mixed use. Based on this and HCD guidelines that were utilized in our housing element update and state guidelines, staff looked at the development capacity based on the development standards of the TV and determined that an eighty percent capacity was something that would be accurate for the TV zone. So we did, based on council recommendation, increase that from fifty percent to eighty percent. And that allowed us to lower the acreage for the residential while increasing the commercial. So we, we did do that on the July twenty-first.
That's your question about that hundred percent, that hundred percent? Why, no one is building at midpoint. Everyone is building over midpoint. So why don't I just use midpoint? Like I, I, there's not one development that's building at midpoint in Brentwood.
Right, absolutely. And, and you could use midpoint for a hundred percent residential projects. The only one that really is not applicable to use midpoint is a mixed use designation. So that is the only one that we are not using midpoint. Our mixed use designation, our TV designation, we are utilizing state guidelines and going off of HCD guidelines and suggestions on realistic capacity. And in terms of a Transit Village mixed use designation, a midpoint is not a realistic capacity for a mixed use designation. So that's where staff is coming from, our eighty percent recommendation is because based on mixed use development and HCD guidelines, an eighty percent capacity is more realistic than a hundred percent.
Okay. And I mean, I guess if, if you guys are going to come and tell us something is the guideline, I want to see the HCD guideline because it was interesting when we were doing our exercise, it was just a plug and play, right? You would change it from fifty to eighty. You asked us what number we were comfortable with and you never gave, you never said you can't go over it, right? It was us to us to plug and play. On this one, I'm plugging them and playing it a hundred percent. I don't want to go less than a hundred percent unless you can bring up on the screen the HCD guideline that tells me what's the max I can do. If they don't set a max in their documents, then let's go for the midpoint is what I'm saying on this one. Because they're not going to come in at thirty-two five. They're going to come in closer to forty. I can almost guarantee you that. And now we're, and we're letting them get more housing acreage within, is going to increase it even more. Because, yeah, I'm, I'm just, I'm not, well, we could talk about during discussion and, and during, when we get public comment, maybe during that time, you can bring up the HCD guideline that says I can't go over eighty percent. And I'll follow the rules as long as you show me the rules.
So, and I'd like a follow-up on that, you know, on it. During the last meeting, we talked about if we went up to five stories, then it would be twenty percent commercial, not just twenty percent commercial minimum only at five stories. So at each story, it makes a difference. And I asked staff about that and they says, no, that's not the consensus of the council. But that was, that twenty percent came in from staff at the workshop. It did not come from us, except when we were relating to the fifth story. When there's five stories with the bottom being a hundred percent commercial. And, and I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, council, if I, I thought there was at least three of us who wanted commercial a hundred percent on that lower level. Not twenty percent as is dictated in, and I'm sorry, I, I, I had sent things to different staff members and my notes come back from all different councils or from, from three different staff members. So I don't have those notes right there. But, but the consensus was that that the first floor would be a hundred percent commercial. Not twenty percent, which is what it, it's listed in, in our develop, development standards. So.
Yeah. Councilmember, I would say that's a very easy change. If, if the city council is part of the motion tonight, wants to make a hundred percent first, the first story commercial, we, we can absolutely do that.
Yes, I think we said that. Yeah.
Yeah.
So like I said, we, we had a five and a half hour meeting, so we did our best trying to get everything. And that's why we had this meeting before we went back to planning commission so that we could have this discussion and, and go through and click and clear up these types of things.
Yeah. Yeah.
How many?
Whoever Meyer had shook her head, yes, that hers was also a hundred percent, so.
Can I ask a question? Sorry, Karen, councilmember, are you done?
No, that, that was what, that was my question regarding the Transit Village.
So here's another thing. It's like, if you look at high-density residential, how many stories can that be? That's three stories. That's three stories.
Six, six stories, Josh, is that correct?
No, no, I'm sorry.
Five, it's five.
Yeah, so it's gonna be, I didn't, high density residential should be, and I'll verify, I promise I'll look at the, the. Guidelines here for development centers, it should be maximum three stories typically, this is, this is your lower density residential within P A one.
Yeah.
So for three stories, so that's five, you, five apartments per acre, like you said, five, 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 three stories, right? And that's fifteen, and now I'm giving them five stories. So they should be able to do the thirty two five if you divide it up by the five stories, that's what I'm not understanding why, like. If you were to design out these complexes, thirty two five is a realistic number for a five story. If you took away the commercial and just got a five story building, that is completely doable. So I'm, I'm sticking to the midpoint and if, I'm, I'm not ready to change that, but we'll talk about that during discussion.
And, and council member Mendoza, we're, we're ready and we'll work on putting that together, that's the, what the council wants this evening.
Well, and, and not only that, is that it says in order to facilitate, on page five twenty. Nor to facilitate an appropriate pedestrian oriented urban scale with transit. Designated area, buildings should be constructed at a minimum of three stories and. A minimum of three stories and I, that was adopted in two thousand and eighteen. So. The fact that we were only using a fifty fifty is, is kind of blows my mind as well.
And council, council member Ray, so council member Ray sent out, sent us a few questions. And I can kind of go through if you'd like me to, we, we would make some changes. First, that is a typo, it should say thirty feet minimum, not twenty feet minimum on page five twenty. There is also some questions related to, or some changes related to the fire station, a number Sonic. Their gigabyte fiber internet that will make some changes to Tri Delta and this, and no longer servicing Discovery Bay. And then also removing on page five oh nine freight yard truck terminals recycling facility since we've removed that from the land use tables. And then council member, you also asked, since you don't have your notes in front of you, I can give you the other ones. The other one that you asked about was related to restaurants having large glass accordion style doors. Which can be, definitely can be allowed. And then on page five twenty two and five twenty three, you asked about.
Oh, and not just accordion style doors, but also windows. When I was in Mountain View, they had accordion style windows that allowed for restaurants. To open those windows, which then let the smell of the restaurant come out to those eating outside or passing by. Without opening the entire, you know, having an entire glass wall there. So that was why I asked either or, as well as having. On the tops of the Transit Village or, or any of, any of the residential components and commercial. To allow in addition to the vegetated rooftops. To also allow for. Patio gardens.
And then the other one you asked was related to the question, Sand Creek Regional Park Facility. And if that was discussing the Sand Creek Sport Complex. Or if that was for a future to be named park on the southern side of the P A one specific plan. And that was returned to the Sand Creek Sports Complex.
Well, except for in the general plan update in twenty fourteen. That area that we are calling a park in this plan was adopted as a park in the twenty fourteen general plan.
So, yes, you are correct, one of the, one of the largest changes on, on this map is we added thirty three acres of. Recreational facilities which currently were, which in the past were not included in the specific plan. So, so that is, and now would be in the specific plan and that's thirty three acres.
Okay, and. Now everybody keeps throwing away around S B three thirty and, you know, all these housing laws and we can't reduce here. If we do, we have to upzone there anywhere else. So how can we downzone Transit Village? Multi-family high density residential without up zoning somewhere else?
So what, the assumption, so when we made the changes. And make, propose the changes as it relates to the regional commercial, at that time. When the specific plan was originally adopted and made the assumption that only fifty percent of your transit village. Would be developed as residential. As a result, we, we, we did not believe, we, we believe that that number could change. And we believe that the more likely number and what we're comfortable with under S B three thirty is saying that eighty percent. Would be, and as a result, that's how we are not required to upzone properties somewhere else with, within the city. Because we have properties within the specific plan. That are going to develop at a higher density than what was originally assumed as part of the adoption of the twenty fourth. Yeah, but as part of the twenty eighteen specific plan, so that's the reason why. And so what you, staff's recommendation is that we stick with the eighty, if the council would like to move forward and do it at the hundred percent. We're, we're ready for that, but again, that's our staff recommendation is that we should stick at that. And so it, it's at the midpoint density, but that with eighty percent build out. So the midpoint is thirty two point five units per acre and at eighty percent, that would equal only twenty six units per acre. And what council member Mendoza is saying is, hey, let's, let's just be at a hundred percent, let's, let's not discount it down to eighty percent, is that correct, council member? And so like I said, we are ready to do whatever the council directs this evening.
Okay.
Now, the other question, oh, I'm sorry, council member Mendoza, did you have more questions before I continued on? You're on mute.
How many, how many floors is the multi-family very high density, I mean, stories, sorry.
I think that's a max of three too.
Let me pull that for you, council member.
Okay.
Total height in N V H G R will be four stories or forty five feet max. Darren, you're on mute.
Yep, and that is found on page five thirteen, if anyone's looking.
And the reason I'm saying this is because if we look at the stories, they're four stories, that's, if you divide all the stories, you're getting six point three. Units per story. On high density, you're getting five units per acre per story. And with the thirty two five, you'd be getting six point five, so it's very comparable to the multi-family. We're not, at thirty two five, we're planning something very, very realistic, in my opinion, and, yeah.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. There was one more. Oh, the, the changing. I, I guess I have a problem of moving the region, that, that Transit Village that's, how many acres is that Transit Village? Above. Above the McCallamy Trail.
Josh, you have that acre jump top there.
Four point zero, roughly.
Four point zero acres. So, and what's the size of what you added on? Down below.
I'll, I'll share my.
Okay, thank you.
Josh.
Okay, just want to make sure I'm talking from the same page here. And, and Darren, do you have the diagram side by side, alt B, alt C?
Uh, let me.
But it'll be two up from there.
This one?
Uh, slide three, your, your land use map.
Sorry.
That's good.
This one, there we go.
Great, thank you. Yeah, so, so roughly our calculation is about five point two acres. What you'll also see in the difference between alt B and alt C, because there was a reduction in multi-family very high density, which is your orange. Having that reduction in acreage in order to meet the twenty forty one overall threshold of the E I R. We added in Transit Village along Highland Ranch on the, the western, western middle portion. So there, there's plus or minus a few acres there, and it wasn't a clean makeup of North McCallamy Trail and moving that down. In order to make sure we are complying with the state law and the, the S B three thirty guidelines.
Yeah, it just seems like we're whittling away at more and more E C L I. And, and while your chart says that it's only a couple acres. If we remove four acres from up there, we, we. We moved over the, the, actually, the, the brown from down farther. That, you know, that street that comes off of the McCallamy curve there. Is, is farther down than what it is up on the, where the brown and the purple. Differ on the alternative B. And then you've got an area that looks like it's significantly larger than. The seven, or the four point oh acres that, that it was supposed to be replacing, so. I, I, it just seems like we're, we're losing more and more E C L I.
And, and I guess the trade off is with reducing the multi-family very high density, the orange. The trade off with having transit villages, you would have as recommended a, a minimum twenty percent commercial build out. And we would rec, we recommend to any developer from the economic development side is to build above and beyond twenty percent. But what we are setting is a minimum threshold recommendation.
But we're not going with twenty percent, we're going with a hundred percent at that first floor.
It, with council's direction, we can certainly do that.
That was the council's direction at the last meeting, there was just, we just had three people here say that that was what they said at the last meeting.
Right, so we have a requirement for first floor commercial guaranteed, it says right there in the, in the design guidelines. What we're saying is that if you have a large footprint development application, twenty percent of the overall footprint at minimum needs to be twenty, twenty percent commercial. So that we make sure we instill that we receive, that Brentwood receives commercial within the Transit Village Zone.
That, that's not specifying the first floor, that's specifying the entire footprint.
The entire development project. So, so it may, it may require two stories are commercial. It's really going to depend on development application, and so we'll have guidelines that say first floor commercial required for Transit Village mixed use environment. For pedestrian and commercial activity, as well as a twenty percent square footage built requirement for commercial. Versus residential for every development application that comes along.
I'm sorry, you're saying both then, hundred percent first floor and twenty percent overall?
Yeah, so you'll have, you'll have a, a first floor requirement. Now, what you could have, and a lot of these projects in Transit Village, especially with high density, you have to park. So on the backside, you may have podium parking, stack parking, so maybe the profile helps for the residential. But the main thing is you get a commercial component to every development within the Transit Village mixed use. And it gives your community development team, as well as planning commission, future council consideration, some flexibility to make sure that you have. Projects that can, that move forward with the goal of absolutely getting commercial within the, within that use designation area.
So Josh, I, I just want to clarify what I, I think, and, and council member Meyer, I'm sure if you, you're. I, I, my understanding to her question was, we can in, in put in place the one hundred percent. Of, of the ground floor and the minimum twenty percent of this, this, the footprint, is that?
Absolutely could, yes.
Thank you.
And council member Ray, on page five fifty one, where it talks about mixed use commercial ratio, we will add a line that states. A hundred percent first floor commercial. To make it very clear in the development standards.
Yeah, because that right now is twenty percent.
Got it, yep, so we'll, we'll make that change and, and we'll make sure that it's part of the motion this evening.
Yeah.
I do think we took it, council member, didn't we take it as far in the conversation to go, if it's two floors, it's fifty, if it's three floors, it's thirty three. I think we said like we were going to put a grid in there because it was very, very specific.
So, yeah, so council member Mendoza, there was, you, you asked questions about that, that was, I don't know how we. Manage that over time. That's why we just put in, hey, it'll be a hundred percent first, first floor, which I, I, I get, made that very clear.
Okay.
And that there'd be a minimum of twenty percent.
Okay. Minimum twenty percent, okay, let me think about that and then we'll come back to that while we're passing the resolution.
Yeah. If you have any other questions, don't hesitate. Council member Ray, did, did I answer, did we answer all your questions or do you have a couple more?
No, I, I think that was it, my main concern was regarding the Transit Village. And then also to do those corrections in the. Corrections on the pages that, that I identified. Alright, yeah, I think that's it.
Um, Darren or any of the staff that has this answer that you, you deem to answer it. I just want to be really clear that with these. These changes that are being asked of our council, from our council right now. With, with this product that, that will be the land use plan for all, all, alt C. Is this going to comply with everything that is anticipated? As much as we can anticipate what the state's going to be doing in the next few years. This, this plan is a long term plan. I personally want to see something that is as viable for as long as possible with. With what we anticipate, the. The state chipping away at local control. I, I want something that is, is rock solid as much as we can make it right now. With, with the anticipation and understanding, there are, there are technologies and there are things that are going to go on in the next twenty years. We cannot envision right now. So at any time that, that there are things that are happening with, with this plan. It will come back to that council that is in place at that time. For adaptation and adjustment, adjustment to, from that council. So this, this is a land use plan, but by the very nature of, of how things happen in. In reality, there's going to have to be some changes. That we can't envision right now, technologies, processes, all those different things. But I do want to make sure that we make the best decision we can as far out foreseeable in the future as we can right now. Will this plan, as you presented it to us with these changes? Will that do that and keep us in alignment with the state laws that we're dealing with right now?
So the short answer, yes, that's why we recommended alternative C this evening. And as we've kind of explained, you know, describing how we made the change from regional commercials and, and changing from the fifty to eighty percent. So staff feels very comfortable, well, that's why we're recommending alternative C. Also, I can tell you as an economic development staff, we have a variety of developers that we're working with. That fingers crossed, right, we want to see this site developed. And they're waiting for some type of movement to update the specific plan so that they can hopefully sell. Well, we need some landowner to sell the properties to an interested developer to actually see it developed. And as you stated, Mayor, things do change, this was adopted in twenty eighteen and there's been some significant changes to what can and. to what can and cannot be allowed on these properties and, and, uh, but like I said, we're, we're excited to move forward this alternative. However, if the council wants to make some changes, uh, we're ready to listen to those this evening. I, I have a list already. And then, um, I'm sure we'll have more discussion after public comment related to a possible alternative D, if that's what the council members would like to discuss.
Okay, council member, your hint set.
Uh, yeah, I, the reason why I ran into, wouldn't need to go in the room for the, for my notes. So, uh, I, and going through the agenda, you've got on page four twenty-two, on page four thirty-two and on page four thirty-five, you kept saying that we adopted this master plan in twenty twenty-one, which is not correct. In fact, I, I went through again today and listened to the meeting. And I specifically asked Ryan what, um, how, how they came about proposing this plan, which they would use to create the, uh, concept design to send out for marketing. And, and he said that it was a culmination of, of listening to different people and, and they kind of put it all together to, to, to give this concept plan. Now, concept is not a detailed plan. No amendments were made, no, um, rezoning was done. We, we did not adopt this plan. And then following, uh, and then he said it, that it, it, um, he says, this is a, this flexible plan is meant to evolve. And then Terrence responded, I would also stress, stress that those four visions, the four previous maps um, are going to be involved or included in our marketing material going forward to show in a rough idea what to, what do different ways, what different ways this can be approached to really demonstrate that flexibility that Ryan is talking about. Then to clarify said, okay, so we are not looking at a plan and saying, yeah, this is it. This is what we want to do. Because my concern, then I went on to talk about my concern about is if we say that this is a plan and our, our residents don't like rezoning, they don't like general plan amendments. If we're going to say that this is going to be general commercial up here, but no, we're not going to do that. We're going to turn it back over to residential, the neighborhoods or our residents are going to get upset because they don't like those. So I, I, I take offense with those, and, and we brought it up at the last couple meetings that, that you continue to add that in, that we adopted a plan in twenty twenty-one, which we didn't, we, uh, we adopt, or we, we approved a concept design for marketing materials is what we approved. And to continue to look at the master plan.
And, uh, council member, right, thank you for your comments. And I think that's why this evening, and I, I've always gone back to twenty eighteen and the original adoption of the specific plan. And, uh, I, I understand what you're stating as relates to, uh, to the staff report and, and if we, if the council decides to move forward this to the planning commission, this will be a, a, an amendment to the specific plan and a rezone. Um, all these changes are, are required. And the only way that could change is you would have to go back through a similar process and do an amendment to the specifics, specific plan and do a reset.
Okay, I, and I understand that, but I, I want all of those things that said that we adopted something in twenty twenty-one removed from this because they are added in to the entire specific plan on pages four twenty-two, four thirty-two, four thirty-five.
Uh, we, we, uh, they're not referenced in the specific plan and I will remove them from the staff report.
No, that, that, that is part of the specific plan.
Yeah, council member, so we'll go ahead and, and include that language regarding the, um, concept for the, for the marketing initiative and that it led to councils further discussion through public hearings of the last couple of months that we've had with you. That'd be, that'd be no problem.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sorry, page four thirty-five. I, I was on the wrong page, council member.
If there are no further clarifying the questions of staff at this time, uh, then we will, uh, open public comments, uh, on this item, Margaret.
I received no written public comments on this item. If you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand using the zoom feature. I'll call your name if provided and unmute to speak. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. I do have one hand raised. Let me go ahead and share the timer screen. And I'll call on Carolina Villaseca. Carolina, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. I, I guess I missed a couple of meetings and I'm really surprised to be here once again, having the discussion that we're having tonight. I really thought we would be further along with this process. The big concern for me is that there doesn't seem to be a focus on the commercial possibilities of this project. We talk about commercial a hundred percent on the first floor and, and that's it. And so it's, it's very limited. Like, what, why aren't we thinking bigger? Like, where are we going to put, let's say, a convention center with a hotel? Or, you know, someplace that is like the Los Madano's building that has a, a huge practice come in. Um, we're so close to the airport. Why, why aren't we thinking of businesses that we could possibly entice to come out here? It's right by four. Like, we're, we're selling ourselves so short and, and we're, we're thinking so small, like, oh, we need to build houses here, we need to build houses there. What about the focus on businesses? I, I'm not hearing anything about businesses with, with, that, that could come here that would have non-retail salaries. Because those jobs that retail provides are, are, are not sustainable for people to come here and live here. We, we don't need those jobs. What we need are jobs that are salaried that come from medium companies, small and medium companies that actually do something that isn't retail. And this obsessive focus that we can't somehow between staff and, and city council get the numbers right. I don't, I, it's so frustrating. I don't understand what's going on. But I sit and I listen and numbers are flying back and forth and I'm trying to take notes and I give up because only you understand what you're talking about. But as a resident of Brentwood, what I want to see in that area is commercial development, commercial development. Please, for goodness sake, come to an agreement on what the housing element is going to look like and move on and focus on bringing in companies. In the almost ten years I've lived here, the Los Madano's um, agreement is the only non-retail business that has moved to Brentwood. We have car washes out the Wazoo, we have banks, we have storage companies, none of whom provide decent jobs. And so now, now, now there's this little portion left to build out. We need companies that aren't retail. So please, please, please move forward on this. We don't need any more meetings about this. We just, please, just agree on the numbers and let's move on. Just frustrating.
The next speaker is Senziana Todor, followed by Rod. Senziana, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Uh, thank you for opportunity to speak on this, um, uh, item. It is not a weaponized comment as has been, um, you know, uh, portrayed in, uh, in the press. But, um, uh, all I want to say, I echo what Carolina said and her disappointment. We're, we're having all these numbers back and forth, back and forth without any clarity. I want to just make it very clear, nobody in this forum is building credibility with the, uh, public and the resident by going back and forth fifty thousand times. And I think the council did a great job offering direction, clear direction, what needs to happen. And here we are again, making new modifications, moving things around and, uh, make, uh, very unclear and sometimes not real, um, a statement about what's been approved. If it's two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty-one and so on. Um, this project's been in the works for, I don't know, twenty years now. Are we expecting another twenty years of back and forth, um, to, to pass? Um, literally, at this point, I rather see empty fields as opposed to building something. Because I don't trust that this plan is going to materialize, um, you know, and provide actually the, the type and level of jobs that's been promised for the last twenty years. A lot of people put the trust in the council and in city staff to come up with a good product. And here we are. On top of that, an item that is still, uh, I'm still perplexed on, it, it's why wouldn't as a strategy, uh, calculate the number of housing units that we can, um, uh, uh, project for this area at midpoint. It's been mentioned already that every project that's been in front of, um, uh, city of Brentwood has been presented at maximum density. So let's be strategic and not allow more than what we have to build on this. And again, let's focus more on economic development, creating opportunities to big businesses to come in and, uh, focus on that economic, uh, uh, principle and economic, um, a factor that we want to bring and project for this, uh, development. So again, let's stick with mid-density. Let's have, be strategic and not allow developers to make this a housing project as opposed to a business development type of project. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rod. Rod, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Um. Yeah, I'm sitting here, I'm, I'm trying to, to understand what's going on and, um, uh, it sounds like people are kind of talking past each other instead of to each other. And in particular, I understand the questions and I've been at the prior meetings. And I think I understand pretty well what the city council was asking for. And even tonight, um, as the council is asking questions and asking for clarification, the answers, you know, they seem a little bit not on target. I, I, I think that it would be important for staff at this point to really think about being as careful as they can to communicate clearly. And I understand the need to be, to be careful what you say in this forum and, um, to, to not misspeak. Uh, it's certainly important and, and to explain things maybe in the way that, that you've been thinking about them all along. But, but you have to understand when you're trying to explain something to somebody, you have to understand the question and you have to address the, the question in a very direct way and in an informer, informational way. And you have to understand really what the person needs to know from you. Um, and just be as direct as you possibly can be. And I know everybody's making the best effort and this is complicated stuff. But I just really feel like um, more of an effort should be made and, and out of consideration for the public as well. I mean, the, the, the things, some of the things you're saying, just don't really get to the heart of the matter. And, and I, I feel like some of the adjustments that were made really didn't match up with, with what was asked in prior meetings. And, um, so, uh, just going forward through this meeting, just please, please try to be as direct as you possibly can. And, um, try to make sure that when you answer a question, that you're not clouding things, that you're being direct and that you're illuminating things. And, um, and, you know, I, I really, you know, I, I don't know what else to say. And I, I'm not happy saying this because it's not my general policy to, to say these kinds of things. But, um, I, I just think a little bit of clarity, a little bit of directness, a little bit of staying on the point and being understandable would be really, really welcome in this meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I have no additional hands raised.
Thank you. At this time, then we will close public comment, move into council discussion. Before we do that, I do want to address, uh, something that one of the speakers, um, Ms. Carolina Villaseca said. I completely agree. And I know uh, understanding you'd said you'd missed some of the meetings, uh, where some of those things were discussed. But from the very beginning, just for, uh, our community to understand, uh, the P A one specific plan and the innovation center is exactly, uh, what, what was described. This is our opportunity and our, our last and greatest opportunity to bring in high-paying, high-quality jobs, uh, career jobs, technical jobs, things like that. Uh, that's the whole idea of this. And so I know we are focusing on some, uh, some, uh, for lack of a better way to say it, we're tying up some very important uh, smaller focuses right now, but the overall general plan for this and general idea is absolutely, this, this is our opportunity to create a sustainable uh, business plan and community plan so that it can bring in, uh, long-term revenue to make sure our city continues to be able to provide at least the level of services that we have now. The goal is to, to have better services for a longer period of time. But I don't want there to be any fear that, that this council certainly, or any council in the past that has worked on this had any other ideas, but exactly that. That is what this is for. This is our economic development as far as commercial, high business, local business, local uh, families and individuals able to work here in a career, uh, level pay. That's what this is about. And so I really appreciate, uh, the input from our, our residents. But I, I want you to be assured, at least from my standpoint, that is the number one priority for what this, this, this location is for. Uh, council member Mendoza.
Yeah, so just starting with comments, I think that because we're bound by so many laws on residential, you hear it speaking a lot about residential. But I think if you pay attention to what we're doing, we're fighting for your E C L I. The more residential you have, the less E C L I you're going to have. So the less chance of a convention center and hotel, the less chance of a big employer coming out. So while I think it sounds very residential, what we're doing is we're fighting for your jobs. So, um, for us to have jobs, and I know it, it's convoluted because you hear a lot of residential, but it's because the state laws are what we have to follow for the residential. So if we didn't have those laws, it would be easy. We would just say what acreage we want and we would be done. But because of all of the laws, um, have to do that. Okay, so I am going to share my screen again, which I know you guys love. And, um, so this is again my spreadsheet. This is the suggested, this is what we reviewed in our one-on-one, Darren, this acreage here.
Yep.
Now we're hearing, and that was with the target of seventy fifty-two, but now I know we have to be eighteen twenty-one. Uh, so I would like to use the midpoint for transit village. I do not believe that we would be not following S B three thirty by not using the midpoint. I have never read that. I have never seen that. I have never, I'm on meetings every single Sunday, we were discussed land use. And our midpoint is what saves us. And, and that is what we use on everything. I think even in this case, and I'm not sure, council member, if on this one, they can, they can even go higher than that, like without even asking, like they can just do it. Um, if I'm not mistaken, on the transit village. But they can go up to forty units per acre. And I can guarantee you, it's going to be closer to forty units per acre. So I'm not, we're not down zoning anything. We're using the midpoint. Which is in our, you know, which is what we use for everything. So I would suggest that we, hey, because if we take the units and we go to a hundred and twenty for E C L I, we're not going to get things like a convention center. We're not going to get things like a hotel. Like, we need to maximize the acreage on that side. And then for the residential, get as much residential on that acreage that we can allot to them. And again, look at Amber Lane, Amber Lane, fourteen point four acres. And again, look at Amber Lane. Amber Lane, fourteen point four acres. We have to give them credit for fifteen, which is the midpoint, but they can take advantage and do the twenty, which we know is what's gonna happen over on the other side. So I would like to do the thirty that you suggested for the high-density, thirteen point three for the um, I mean, sorry, multifamily, and then thirteen point three high-density, twenty-seven for the Transit Village, one twenty-seven for ECLI, then everything else is the same, twenty-seven, seven for um rec, zero for public facility, thirteen five for transit, and thirty-three for um uh recreational, which gets us to one eight two seven, which is more than I wanna do. I wanted to do the seven fifty-two until we got that news about we don't get credit, which it's it's also hard for us because I feel like I'm working with the moving target. Every meeting, I'm getting new information. And that's really hard, too. Or I work full-time and I was inundated with emails today. I can't read all those emails. So I think, I understand sometimes things are last minute, but these kind, you know, this kind of thing on the fifteen units, I I feel like we should have known that beforehand. I mean, it's it's just a little frustrating. And I know we're all learning and I know they're moving targets with the laws, but it's just, it's hard to get here to the meeting and see all of these moving parts. But anyway, so that's my suggestion on density. That's where I would like to go on the acreage and we'll see how everyone else feels about it.
Councilmember Mari? You're on mute.
Before I, um, what what was the ECLI? So that brings us up to a hundred and twenty-seven on that. That's good.
One twenty-seven.
That 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 is much better. Um, also, in addition to this, um, I I'd like to see a change. As I, as I mentioned earlier on page um, five twenty, it says that uh there should be a minimum of uh three stories for transit villages, uh, mixed use. Um, that's currently in our uh specific plan. Um, I would like to make page five eleven, the uh development standards on that page for Transit Village mixed use to also include that three-story minimum so that those two areas match. We got one-on-one page that says two stories. We got another on another page for three stories. Um, and it it says that we should have it at a minimum of three stories. So I I'd like to see that changed as well. But I I agree with these, you know? When we started this in two thousand and seventeen, it has been twenty years. It's, it seems like twenty years, but it hasn't been twenty years. Um, we started planning this in two thousand and seventeen. We had our workshop and our working group meet ten times during that year, plus lots of town halls and workshops and city council meetings for that. And um, one of the, the one of the first things they had us do is they split us up into groups and had us design the perfect PA one area. And you'd be surprised with the group of people that we had. There was two maps that had a whole lot of residential in it. And the the map that the the group that I was in created a map called Intensified Economic Development. I think that's what it was called. And um, with the exception of the Transit Village, um, where it was listed in the two thousand and eighteen um adopted plan, and um there was a little bit of medium-density residential over on the east side. And other than that, the whole thing was economic development. Because that's what I thought this was all about. But unfortunately, BART came in and said, in order for you to even be considered for a BART station, you have to have a minimum of two thousand residential units. So that's where this came in for residential units. If it was, if it wasn't about that, I would have just said, let's do the whole thing as as commercial, employment center, light industrial. That's what we need is jobs here, high-paying, high-wage jobs to get our people off the roads or to create a reverse commute, which then reduces the traffic going out of town um for our residents who have to continue to work outside of the area. So I I think we need to move forward on this. And um, I I agree with Councilmember Mendoza. These numbers look good. Um, and the only change that I would make was for the development standards on five eleven for Transit Village multi-use and to make it so that it's a minimum of three stories.
Councilmember Meyer?
Thank you. And and I would say I wish that the uh diagrams and and planning from two thousand and seventeen actually could fly these days with housing laws being what they are, just to put it that way. Um, I I these do, the numbers do look good, but I I wanted to get one final bit of feedback from staff on these numbers and also find out if Jennifer was able to check the HCD website or the answer to Councilmember Mendoza's question earlier about the eighty percent versus hundred.
Yeah. Um, okay, can I, let's see, share my screen, am I able?
Sure.
Could do that. Okay, let's see.
And while you're doing that, it's, I I also wanted to address some of the concerns we're hearing from the community. And um, we've, we've probably each had an equal number of community members who have reached out and said, thank you for taking the time uh to go item by item and and parcel by parcel and just really review and make sure we're getting the best possible product because this this is it for us. So um, just just have to say thank you to everybody for their feedback. It it certainly helps us in in our decision-making. And and I'm sure all of us want to move forward and make sure this happens, but we need to do it in a way that is uh protecting our interests in the best way, too.
So um, I did bring up, uh, this here is from the HCD website. Um, it is the two thousand and twenty site inventory guidebook that is used um in analyzing potential site inventory for residential development. Um, the site inventory guidebook does not have um an explicit realistic capacity number. Um, what it does is it provides guidance um to factors to be used in in making adjustments to determine that. Um, staff has has reviewed the guidance, some of it um, for instance, says, you know, if one of the areas that talks about to allow a higher capacity is the allowance for a hundred percent residential development. Um, currently, as written, PA one does not allow a hundred percent residential development in the TB mixed-use zone. Um, another area that we can look at is reasonable reason, uh, sorry, regional or local trends within the non-residential zone and mixed-use district. Um, and unfortunately, because PA one is so new, um, we don't have any of those trends that we can go back on. Um, so yes, it it does not have a specific number. Um, but staff has read through all of the guidelines and guidance that it provides within this guidebook. Um, and based on on this, um, staff came to the recommendation of eighty percent. The way that staff looks at that eighty percent is if um, if you have a one-acre parcel, staff looks at it more along the lines that eighty percent of the total parcel is going to be developed at the midpoint. Um, staff fully acknowledges that, you know, the midpoint or above is is definitely potential. But we only believe since we do require part of it to be commercial, that on a one-acre parcel, eighty percent would be developed at the midpoint and the rest of the twenty percent of the parcel would be developed at commercial. Um, this also has to be looked at um holistically over all of the sites. Um, we aren't just dealing with one site, we're dealing with multiple sites. And so, you know, while some may develop at higher than eighty percent, some may also develop at lower than eighty percent. Um, so holistically, staff has reviewed these guidelines and and does feel that based on the guidelines of HCD, that holistically across the board in the TV zone, that eighty percent is a realistic capacity for residential development. So and that is kind of how staff came to um our recommendation tonight um in in Alternative C.
In the last five years, how many projects have we upzoned that have come in over the midpoint? And how many have come in under the midpoint? Because if I'm reading this, it's based on our performance in our region. And Amber Lane is the closest example. That is part of the PD and that came in over midpoint.
The City of Brentwood in the last five years has not developed a single mixed-use product. So we do not have any comparison. For HCD guidelines, we can't compare a mixed-use project to a high-density, a very high-density project, which is a hundred percent afford, which is a hundred percent residential development. Um, that's why mixed-use projects or mis- mixed-use designations are are unique. Um, they
But every product is different, right? A apartment is different from residential or different from townhouses. But in Brentwood, Brentwood, if we're talking about track record, like HCD is saying, we know that in Brentwood, everyone wants to upzone. It's where people want to live in the region. I think it is unrealistic to expect it to come less than midpoint. And I think that if we show all of our projects over time, regardless of the type, I think we have a very good case at saying, we're gonna do it at midpoint, HCD, but I can guarantee you, we're gonna come over midpoint. And that's why I'm 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 sitting strong on the thirty-two five. Based on that, it's, you know, the performance, the trends, like, we know what's going on out here.
Well, and I was gonna ask if we could compare regional trends. If we don't have this project specifically in Brentwood, what about in our region?
We can, yeah, it is something that if um, I I don't have those numbers in front of me. Um, but we could compare reasonable trends. Um, I'm sure we can get that from from A-BAG to find out what the the mixed-use regional trend is for regional development. Um, but unfortunately, that that's not something that we would be able to have for you tonight.
Okay, thank you.
I we really need to to move forward on this tonight. This this is, we we have there there every, every concern is absolutely very valid and and very important. But if we don't finish this and move forward with this, we're we're never going to get to a point where where the whole, the whole spirit of this, the whole idea of this is to bring in these these jobs and this commercial uh capability. If we don't do that now, um, we're we're going to really painfully injure ourselves uh with with the potential. Um, I I have a question of staff. The numbers that we're presented by Councilmember Mendoza with what what staff has recommended, uh, what what would be the actual difference? I I want our community to understand. I want to understand on on a really simple level, wh- what is the difference from what you presented and what Councilmember Mendoza presented? And is it something that can be absorbed readily so that we can move forward tonight uh to get this moving so that we can start um implementing the infrastructure, implementing the businesses that have expressed interest in this area? I I don't want to miss out on opportunities that are facing us right now uh to to strengthen our our general fund, to strengthen the uh sustainability of us, uh of us as a city so that that we can move forward with this. Because I I know every single council person has has mentioned moving forward with this. How do we do that? And how close are we with these numbers, I guess, is what I'm asking.
Josh, did you pull those numbers side by side?
I have the ones that they're up on the screen.
Yeah, and Council, thank you, Mayor and and Councilmember Mendoza. So I I think it comes down to, and I I have a full analysis on my screen as well. It comes down to a decision point of six point five acres of Transit Village. It would be a net reduction in acreage of six point five acres. And that's really a decision point in difference between where we are as staff's recommendation and should the council want to move forward with um Ms. Mendoza's recommendation as as a full council. And that that's really a decision point. We would come back with the modeling. Uh, it would be um not consistent with previous adoptions related to the or or movement and recommendation from uh Jennifer related to the housing element. Uh, but at the end of the day, this is council's decision. If you want to move it forward on that particular item, we could follow up with all the modeling for the Planning Commission uh to post to the agenda tomorrow.
And I'm still, I I'm still not feeling, I mean, I'm saying the six point five and I'm hearing the six point five. I, maybe I'm just being a little bit more visual here. I wanna, I wanna see, um, like, put a map up and and use your cursor and show what that would look like. Because I don't see, I don't see the sticking point here for six point five acres. And I feel like I I definitely want to move forward tonight. I I want to really see what it is that that is working or or not.
I also would like to see, I also like to see something visually, like in the map, what that impact would actually be. So I agree with Councilmember Meyer. If we could actually see what that six-point acres looks like on this map, what it's gonna impact and what it doesn't impact.
And I think, like I said, just a simple, bring the map that we already have and use the cursor.
And the other thing is, it's not only, it's, you know, reducing Transit Village by six point five and giving it back to ECLI, it's also the adjustment in density from twenty-six to thirty-two point five and using the midpoint. So it's those two different, three different points. And then we would get to the eighteen twenty-seven units that we have to get to.
Yeah, that that is the change, Councilmember, is the uh go into thirty-two point five versus the twenty-six.
Yeah, so I'm ready to go. If not, everyone's okay with that.
Great. Uh, Mayor, councilmembers, are you seeing a map on your screen?
Now, Josh, really quick question. In regards to the recommendation, recommendations from Councilmember uh Mendoza, I mean legally, are we still like, okay? I mean, in the eyes of the the law, I guess.
So so Councilmember Rodriguez, this evening, I would tell you, staff is comfortable with Alternative C. We're not comfortable making a recommendation to move forward with something outside of that. But if if this was, the council wants to move forward, we'll continue to push it to Planning Commission as as Josh stated.
Yeah, but my thing is, though, is that would there be any legal issues in regards to us moving forward with whatever we put together tonight? I mean, I also don't want to put the city ourselves in a position where we have to come back and go through this again because obviously we can't move forward because of legal reasons.
Yeah, so uh, any projects could be contested. And uh, under our review, we feel very strongly that we're okay with this eighty percent number, which me- means that it's a density of twenty-six versus a density of of the thirty-two point five. That's a
I mean, Alternative C is what we're looking at and that's what you guys are recommending. If we change anything on that, there may be a possibility that we may not be able to move forward because it might have some legal uh uh issues in regards to that.
Yes.
And that's my concern, right? We're gonna end up coming back to do this again, once you guys research whatever the recommendation is and come to find out we can't do it anyway.
With all due respect, because I I I know there's been a a lot of work that's gone into this and staff has spent a lot of time trying to accommodate. I'm still not feeling like the explanation about what the problem is, what the legal concerns would be, are clear.
Yeah, so Councilmember, let me try to explain one thing. So um, at, as we, uh, and I'll kind of go back, this will maybe help some the the public, too. So the specific plan was adopted and as a result of SB three thirty, we're unable to downzone property, right? So we have to be able to to demonstrate to the state that we're still allowing for the same amount of residential development to occur within the specific plan of undeveloped parcels. So as we came forward with this change for a variety of reasons, but one of them was uh, we had some regional commercial uh to the north and then working on the plan to make it better, to see it to develop. Um, as a result, that meant that we were reducing some um acreage that's currently zoned for residential uses. So we have to go back and determine, okay, how can we, if we were to be questioned or sued by the state or by a resident or a property owner? or by a resident or a property owner related to downzoning and being in conflict with SB 330? We tried to figure out how, how, how can we determine that? Well, in the original approval, it only showed that 50% of the density would actually be built out within the Transit Village Mixed Use Development Center. And so as a result, we're like, you know what? It's not reasonable that it's going to come 50% and it's not reasonable that it's going to be 100%. And we came to a determination that we believe that, that 80, 80%. So that, that means 26 units per acre instead of the 32.5 is what we could then justify and be able to protect, to be able to justify to, to the state and anyone who would question if we were downzoning properties against SB 330. So that is the crux of it. And so that is your staff's recommendation. But here this evening, if the council wants to go all the way up to 100%, as Councilmember Mendoza and Rary have, have requested, we're, you know, we can continue to move forward with that. Did that answer the question, Councilmember Meyer, a little bit more directly? And I will say, in total, we're reducing residential uses by over 10 acres. And of total, ECLI would be 100, well, business related properties, round numbers, 150 acres. Future mixed use developments, 33.5, if I remember correctly, on, on both bars, Councilmember Mendoza, and, and about 55 acres of residential, future residential.
But we're not reducing units.
We're not reducing units and, and your staff feels strongly about the 80%, but we're here to listen to the direction of the council this evening. If you want to go to 100%, again, this is our recommendation. But Councilmember Meyer, if, if, if the council wants to go different than that, we will deal with that and if we need to come back, we will. If we slow down, there are possible projects that could decide to go somewhere.
Well, I think, I think we've all expressed, we don't want to slow. I think we've all expressed, we want to handle this tonight and we're committed to doing that. I just want to make sure we're considering every single thing we, we need to, to, to protect our resident interests and moving forward as best we can. And this, this might be a completely uneducated question. Is there nothing between 80 and 100?
We pushed it, I, we feel strongly at 80%. I, you know, I'm
But why is it 80% of the midpoint? Why isn't it 80% of the maximum?
Because we're using the midpoint across all the areas.
Nowhere, nowhere in what we read, it's all subjective, right? Like, we could say it's 80% of the maximum we think they're going to go to. It's, it's subjective. We are not downzoning. We are allowing them to do midpoint 32.5. And we know they're going to come in over. So I, I don't want anyone to think we're downzoning because that is not what we're doing. This is all a math calculation. And we are saying, build your units exactly as we have them planned. We're saying 32.5 is midpoint, you're going to probably go closer to 40. And nowhere does it say you have to take a percentage of the midpoint in the rules from HCD. Does it say midpoint? But we could be taking 80% of the maximum. It's all subjective. That whole paper, because it's not clear guidelines, is subjective. So go ahead, Jennifer.
For clarification, we, we absolutely could use the maximum. The caveat to that is we would also have to recalculate the 2018 numbers to the maximum. So whichever our base is, we have to compare apples to apples. So we could modify our 2018 acreages and multiply them by the maximum and Alt C or Alt D and multiply it by the maximum. Ultimately, they would both come up with the same differential, but we, we do have to use the same multiplier in both numbers.
Yeah, I just think that it's subjective. If HCD wanted us to be used a percent, they would have given us a percent. We, as a city, know our city the best and control has been taken away. This is one place where we can have control. And we can say, we want to use the midpoint and we welcome people to come in over the midpoint if they choose. They think they can go up to 40. So I don't feel uncomfortable with the 32.5 because if HCD wanted it to be specific, they would have given us a specific number. And there is not a specific number anywhere in that language that I saw. So, um, I don't know. I mean, I'm ready to make a motion. I don't know how you guys feel about it.
Well, before
I'm ready to get it done.
Before we make a motion, and I, and I, I really do appreciate what, what you're, you're saying, Councilmember Mendoza, I really, really do. And here's my main concern. From the state's eyes, and please staff clarify at me if, if I'm wrong. From the state's eyes, the experts are saying that it's not reasonable to expect the capability of developing 100%. That's not reasonable in a mixed use product. Because they have other mixed use products all up and down the state that they have as a baseline comparison. So if we, as a city, say we are going to be the anomaly and we are able to do what others don't or can't do. And, and, and also, I know you understand, but I want the community to understand, the city doesn't build anything. We, we zone for it, we prepare for it, we plan for it, but we're not the ones that actually build these things. So having it, having a developer come to fulfill this vision that we've all worked so hard to accomplish for this commercial product and, and this mixed use product, we're going to have to be able to say to the state, we, we are able to work with the developer that's going to implement our vision and we are able to do 100% of this. The state then looks at us and says, we believe that you can do that. With my experience on council from the state, they generally don't give cities the benefit of the doubt. And, and that's, that's the crux of my concern. That we approve 100% and the state has all kinds of red flags that goes up and we're not able to implement exactly what we're wanting to whereas our, our staff who are experts in this field are saying, this is what we should do, but here's why. If, I, I firmly believe our staff, if we were able to do this without significant concern from backlash from the state to do 100%, I believe they'd say, let's do 100%. It is so much easier to look at me as a councilperson and say, this is what you want? Absolutely, let's do it. Than it is to look at me and say, I know you want this, but there's danger potentially as an expert in this decision. We'll do it, but understand there's likely to be backlash. So
If the state says, you know what, Brentwood, no way, and they send us a letter from HCD, then we make the adjustment. But why are you going to give away the farm? Like, I, that's, I don't understand. I do think that we are, I think we're going to build over 32.5. So why, if we are wrong, then HCD can, I mean, they, I've been on calls with them. We'll send you a letter knowing your, you know, your number's wrong. So why are we jumping the gun and giving it away before we even see any of the projects before us? Because if you give up more acreage at, you know, at, you know, 6.5 acres, you're going to give away, you're going to have an additional at 32.5. That's an additional 211 units. 6.5 times 40 units, which is their max, you're going to give away 260 units. So by going with, that's how many units we're, like, we are putting at risk of having more, more people on the road, more strain on our infrastructure, more kids in our school. We already know Pioneer, they're doing their reading lessons in the hallway. And that's what, and that's what, like, I don't know what's going to happen with Pioneer after the apartments open. So how do I keep putting my burden on our residents when I think we're safe at midpoint? I can't do it to them. I just can't. I would rather take to the midpoint, see what projects we come in. If someone wants to come in over 32.5, go ahead. I mean,
And again, I, I don't disagree with your, your line of reasoning at all. I, it's very valid. My, my concern I expressed. Darren, do, do you think moving forward like, like Councilmember Rary and Councilmember Mendoza with 100%? What do you think the, the backlash will be? Is it something that we can absorb? Is this something that, it's, it's something that I'm, I'm, listen, if, if all it is, is a letter from the state saying, hey, we, we don't buy it, you're going to have to go back to 80% or whatever. I'm certainly willing to go through that process if we can move this forward tonight. What would, what is reasonable to expect this from the state if we move forward at 100%?
So, so Mayor Brad, I, I know Katie popped on, but let me just answer your question. As you stated, I, I don't enjoy sitting here and like, as I said, I'm, I'm not arguing with councilmembers. I'm just giving you what my professional advice is this evening. And I will do as directed. But my recommendation is to continue with Alt C as proposed. And there are other things that could occur, but, but Mayor, again, it would be much easier for me to say, oh yeah, it's no problem. Trust me, I, I'm your economic development guy. I want as much ECLI as possible. I want to get this place, you know, developed out. But this is where we are comfortable this evening presenting to the city council.
I, I don't think you answered his question. Yes, what do you think would happen? Not what you're comfortable with.
We, we could get sued, which would then slow down the project and possibly could put on hold any possible project going into, that would need a change to go into the specific plan and innovation center. So we have multiple developers that we're working with. No, no one's bought land that if, if it would put their projects on hold and there are some that I know would look somewhere else if we got sued because it would slow down the process. And they, they have other locations that they could go to. So, so that, that's what would occur. My, my worst nightmare is that you get sued, it slows down a project and at least one large project does not go to Brentwood.
So I, I have a question. Alt B, is, is that at the 26 midpoint for the TVMU? Or, or is that at the 32?
It is, it is at the 26.
It's at the 26. So we went to Alt B, which gives us, and I still don't understand why we were increasing the Transit Village and decreasing the multifamily and taking, it, it, it appears that we're taking up more space of ECLI. I know the alignment of it is, is different, but it, it just seems like we're adding a whole lot more in Alt C than we are in, if we kept it at Alt B. And, and raise that to the, the 32.
Is there an answer for that?
And so, once again, the going back to 32 is where we have major concerns. But if you wanted to go back to
80% of, of going at 100% of 32 that was a concern.
So we're using the, we are using the midpoint of 32.5. We're just making the assumption that only 80% will build out.
Okay.
So, so we, we're keeping the midpoint across the board with all land, all land uses with residential densities.
So, okay, what if we do 90% and we get to 29.3? And then it's 4.5 acres reduction in, which I don't want to do ECLI and then give that to Transit Village. Because 80, 80% is an arbitrary number, like, right? You, you just told us there is no history, there's no nothing. So why don't we just use 90%?
I just want to, oh, go ahead.
I, I'm, my assumption is you're talking to the other councilmembers and not me, Councilmember Mendoza.
No, I'm, I'm, well, okay, other councilmembers, like, okay, we've heard everything. We read the sheet from HCD. They don't give you a guideline on the percent. I don't want to do, I want to do 100. But what if we give it 90%? So from 32.5, we go to 29.3. I have to increase Transit Village to 29 acres and reduce, so an increase of from, yeah, 29, yeah, 29 acres from my original 27 and then ECLI goes to 125. And that's at 90%.
So what's, what's concerning, I mean, we've been working on various maps. We've had these discussions for a long time. I know that I've been on the council going on my fourth year and we've been talking about it since I've gone on the council. And obviously, the mayor and also Councilmember Rary has been working on this for a long time. Our, and what's concerning to me is that our staff, who are the experts, are telling us and giving us a variety of maps and we've changed them a few times, have given us alternative C. And our staff, you know, we have there as our, as our experts, our talent is if we do not, if we go in another direction, it may open the door for possible lawsuits or other things. And it's very difficult for me, I mean, I mean, obviously they can't tell us yes or no, but it sounds like we might lose one opportunities, but also be sued if we don't go with alternative C. So I don't know.
Okay, Jennifer, why don't you pull up the HCD guidelines so Vice Mayor Rodriguez can read the guidelines from HCD? So he understands how that 80, 90% was brought about because it seems like he's confused.
No, that's fine, I understand. And I don't need to read that right now, Councilmember Mendoza. What I'm saying is have our experts who are our staff, they're letting us know that alternative C would be the best position for the city and our residents. And I don't see why, I mean, we thought through this, I don't know. So I don't need to read anything, thank you.
But, but the thing, Vice Mayor Rodriguez, is that from 2000, 2021, they brought us a, a potential concept, concept of, of a map. Then they come to us in what, June of this year? And they presented us with a different map. Then we told them what we wanted and they came to us with a different map that wasn't what we asked for. And now they're coming to us with another map that isn't what we asked for. So I, I, I could see if they were getting closer and closer to what we asked for. But it, it's like they keep stepping, you know, they, they, they're, it's like they're not, there's not an attempt to incorporate the things that we're asking for.
And Councilmember Rary, I totally understand your frustration. I mean, I know you've been working on this a lot longer than I, I have. So I know that obviously I could see, I mean, obviously I could respect that frustration. So I don't want you to think that I don't. Go ahead, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Well, to say they haven't tried to implement what has, has been asked for, we have pages and pages of items that they literally implemented, implemented exactly what we asked for. So that, that is an unfair broad brush. I do understand that there are things that, that that's a correct statement for. But to, for me personally, to insinuate that staff has ignored and hasn't tried to work and implement this, I think
We were talking about the maps specifically.
Right, and, and I, and I agree.
We have some map then, and, and we should listen to what they said about the map. He was talking about the map specifically.
Okay, then, then I stand corrected. But what we have tonight is something that really, I, I don't know what the difference between 90 and 100% is. I, I, I do know this. Our community is, we, we have a window of opportunity to, to move forward with something that is going to be a tremendous benefit to our community. And in the same window, we have an opportunity to lose some significant long-term stabilization to our general fund, to, to our desirability from, from different businesses that are looking in our direction. So, so like it's been said, we do want to move forward. It's just, I, I really have a very difficult time understanding that it's, it's, it's our job, it's, okay, I won't use us, I'll use me. It's my job to have a fiduciary responsibility to protect the wellbeing of our community and the finances and the, the quality of life of our and the the quality of life of our our community. This is something that we have to move forward on. The the level of devastation that would happen by being sued, it it's not like being sued for some other smaller things. This would devastate our ability to to stabilize our future sustainability by being sued. That means this is stopped. That means the things that are are immediate and and near-future benefit to our community and the lifestyle and the quality of life of every one of our residents is is at stake here. If 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 it was a a single developer, if we weren't talking about mixed use, if we were talking about residential or just commercial. Those those are totally different conversations, but what we're looking at right now is an opportunity to move forward. And I would love if if it would work to say, hey, we recommend a hundred percent. It says eighty, we strongly recommend a hundred percent or ninety percent or whatever that is. But but to enter in knowing from from the people that are are watching our backs as as residents, our 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 staff saying, listen, we have stretched it as far as we can can go and and feel like we won't be sued. So to rephrase that, we feel like if we go further, we will be sued. That's where I have the the real rub. Uh i- if 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 my attorney is looking at me on on a personal level saying, if you, yes, of course you can go do this. If you do it, you'll be sued. If you're sued, you're going to be wiped out. You can make that decision, but understand that you are personally responsible for the consequences of that decision. As as a council member, I'm personally responsible for the consequences of my decision on this. And if my decision is endangering the 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 future of our community and the well-being and the stabilization of it, I'm not comfortable doing that right now. Uh and if if we can put wording in there that says, hey, we strongly recommend a hundred percent, we will want to push you to the limits. And as a community, as a council, we will back back up as far as you want to go to give us a a better future. I I'm good with that. But I'm not good with throwing out the advice of of the experts saying, we've pushed this as far as we think we can go without getting sued. And and that's my.
But that's the whole thing. You're saying the experts, but it's arbitrary. When you read those guidelines, they're arbitrary and we don't have history for that. So it's subjective based on who reads it. So that's I'm like, I don't want eighty percent. I want thirty-two-five. So I said, I am okay with ninety. I'm not going to vote for the eighty. I'm not. So if someone wants to make a motion for the eighty, that's it. If not, I'm ready to make a motion for the ninety.
So I I go back to the Alt B map. Is the Alt B, the Transit Village multi-use at the fifty percent level? Or because that would been the last time that came to us, that was only at a fifty percent level, correct?
Oh, no, Alt B was at eighty percent.
Eighty percent.
So so at at the last city council, we we presented you Alt B and we're we're using the exact same. The the exact same assumptions of for the TVMU. So midpoint of thirty-two point five, multiplying that times eighty percent, eighty percent. And and at the last council, Councilmember Mendoza presented us a map. The the request was to see if and we're coming back to saying, here's our recommendation of what of how we, the closest we can get to it, not that we're not following it. We we believe that we need to stick at that that uh eighty percent.
So right now, you just asked us to approve of Matt in regards to the ones that we have in front of us, right, Darren?
Yeah, and and al- alternative B or alt- are to are both alternative B and alternative C. Could be adopted.
Can you pull up the map like on page four twenty-six of the agenda of um Alt B, please?
I I just have a problem adding more regional commercial. I I I really do.
You just give me a second.
I would rather see that that Transit Village go back up there and give us those four acres of Employment Center Light Industrial.
My concern with that is that that entire area is is a component that will bring immediate potentially uh funding to our 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 general funds, which th- those general funds are what we're going to cover our our fifth beat with. There are any changes, any improvements. That's where those funds are coming. That had that small component right there um attached to where it is in in Alt C will enable us to to increase the the buffer that we have financially for for any of these changes that we need, the improvements, the sa- sustainability.
I thought that was it, what the enhanced infrastructure finance district was for. Uh we're whittling away at our Employment Center Light Industrial to add in more regional commercial. I mean, the regional commercial started off, the only thing in in the the entire PA one that we're going to do was that area where the seven is now. We've now added another component. Um and now you're asking for a a another regional commercial on top of it. I I just, I I would rather see that Employment Center Light Industrial.
We we think that's a good shift. If you want to do that, Councilmember uh Rary in council, if you want to make that change.
What do you? What do you need, Josh?
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh so this would be this triangle of about four acres um west of of uh the regional, the larger regional commercial site that you considered on August ninth. Um our recommendation for consistency is as this being a larger regional commercial center was to to make it consistent. Uh but if you'd like to see this be purple or ECLI, uh as as Councilmember Rary suggested, that may be a good use. It's a slightly irregular shape, but you may be able to attract um medical office or or related tenant into that space um or or office tenant that wants to be close to this regional commercial lifestyle type um su- center here with a lot of services.
I was actually trying to back to Transit Village.
Okay.
Get rid of that lower part of that at the at the McCallum curve.
Sure, that's a possibility too. Uh just one of the things would be kind of a small footprint residential um and just a consistency with kind of a a potential larger use with with that may be a neighbor. That'd be the only thing to think about.
Or 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 put the the elementary school there.
Can can you be clear, Josh, about?
Yes.
The other impact based on what Councilmember Rary is asking for?
Sure. Uh so the regional commercial use is is typically going to be a uh large, typically a large format commercial user. They'll track vehicle trips. And so just having pedestrians that would reside in homes and having that potential conflict uh adjacent to a large regional commercial didn't really seem as the most desirable intent. Uh so after we had a chance to look at this when the council made direction on August ninth, the recommendation from staff was, okay, maybe we should consider this as a as a regional commercial, that sliver of four acres. Is that clear enough?
My son lived across from the Bay Point Parks or in in an apartment complex right at the backside of the i- in an apartment complex, right at the backside of the Bay Point Park parking lot. So I mean, there's times of the days where it'd be more congested, but for the most part, it wasn't.
Sure.
But this change wouldn't impact any other economic development potential is what I'm getting at.
Correct. So Councilmember Meyer, we would just switch the four acres from south of McCallum and put it back to where it is north of McCallum Trail.
Right.
Got it. Thank you.
Well, do we have a motion? I think we've.
I'll I'll make a motion, but mine is the motion to use Councilmember Rary's adjustment in land use. And I suggest that we for um Transit Village, we use ninety percent of the thirty-two-five, which then brings that up to thirty acres, um a reduction of three point five. And then an ECLI goes up to three point five acres, which I wanted six-five. I wanted more for jobs. So I mean, it's not my favorite thing, but that's the motion I'll make. Well, and then I have to read the motion, right?
And Councilmember Mendoza, I do have a list of the proposed changes that we've discussed to the document too, and I can put those up when before we finalize.
Okay, so I show thirty acres for multifamily, uh thirteen point three acres for high density, thirty for Transit Village, one-twenty-four for ECLI, twenty-seven-seven regional commercial, zero public facility, thirteen-five for Transit Village and thirty-three for recreational amenities. And I'm using ninety percent of midpoint for Transit Village.
How about eighty-five percent?
Well, I have to redo everything.
What about eighty percent? That's.
We're not going to get the jobs if we keep taking away the acreage for jobs.
Yeah. I I understand your reasoning behind it. But HCD is being a but.
I don't want to. I don't want to risk losing a a really fantastic economic development.
Yeah, that's that's my.
I would. I would consider eighty-five and and the changes Councilmember Rary recommended.
I don't. I'm not okay with eighty-five. So you guys can make the motion and do the math.
Well, we do have a first on the floor. Is there a second uh to Councilmember Mendoza's recommendation?
I'm concerned about lawsuit.
Okay, so.
So much. I am too.
So the motion dies for a lack of a second. Do we have another motion? Um I'm before we do that, Jennifer, go ahead.
Um just for, since if you don't have enough options, um another potential option to look at for that single triangle um is if if you would like to modify it to uh TV mixed use is um and and add in the ECLI to make up for that. We also could look into having a dual TV RC um that would allow the uses within the regional commercial as well as the regional uh as well as the TV uses and residential just on that overlay parcel for that specific triangle um for consideration. If you did want to potentially look um at something unique for that specific triangle.
But but they all have retail on the bottoms. They all have regional commercial type things on the bottom.
The 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 permitted uses for the regional commercial are slightly different um than the TV. Um so it would just add a an increased, you know, number of of permitted uses that may be optional, but that is, you know, obviously.
Such as what what would be some of the advantages? And that creates a whole new thing that we have to create development standards for, so we wouldn't be able to move forward on that in this today.
If we had, well, we have the development standards for both. And so if we had an overlay that the developer at the time that they came in could determine on on how they wanted to move forward with it, it would be an overlay. So it would not be a specific zone um changed. So you still already have the development standards for either. It could be developed as regional commercial or it could be developed as TV mixed use. Um and so we could still count it um in in our calculations, but it could be developed as either way if we did want to do that for that specific parcel.
But it but if it developed as as regional commercial, then we would have to upzone something else somewhere else.
No, not necessarily. Currently, um it is not a a site within our housing site inventory. Um as as directed by city council, we have not included um all sites within PA one within the inventory. We have specifically um strategically chosen specific sites to leave out of the inventory. Um so if we do move forward with the housing inventory, we choose not to leave that triangle in the inventory, then we would not have to make up the no net loss.
Well, no, because we can downzone any areas and that's currently Transit Village multi-use. So if we change it over to regional commercial, then we're up against SB three thirty.
It wouldn't be downzoning. It would just be developing at at full capacity. Um it's the same as if a project came in at the lower end of the development capacity. We don't need to rezone to make up for those lost units. Um the zoning allows for it to be developed either way. Um and it's kind of built into the housing site inventory formula in SB three thirty. Um so it's it's not downzoning and there would be no net loss implications if it's not within our inventory.
Yeah. M- Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, uh uh Jennifer has a a great creative suggestion, but at the end of the day, if you'd like to see mixed use being there as our first shot consistently going all the way back to twenty eighteen, let's hold the line, make the change, and then we can we can adjust down the line and and bring that forward if there's potential development. But if if the full council wants or the majority of council wants to see trans uh mixed use product there, put it on the map and we'll we'll continue to move forward with it.
So you're going to model out the numbers before we vote, right? You need to model it out so we can see what we're voting on.
Yes, I'd be glad to.
I like I like to make a motion that we uh accept alternative B. My reasoning for that is in talking with the staff, obviously, um hearing them out in regards to the possibilities of lawsuits and things like that. I'd just like to make a motion that we um move forward with alter- alternative C. That's my motion.
You're on mute, Mayor.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Josh, if you could uh, as Councilmember Mendoza requested, just show us what those changes look like. That's great. Appreciate it.
Mayor, did you hear my uh motion?
I did. Okay, before and uh before we take a second on that motion.
Okay.
Five minute break while he does that?
Oh, um Councilmember Meyer, your your hands up.
Yeah, I I just wanted to to get an understanding of the implications of eighty-five percent versus eighty percent. Risks and implications. How much? How much more protected would be by that than ninety, for example?
Councilmember Meyer, I I would just go back to what staff was comfortable. Um as Councilmember Mendoza said, we had to come up with a subjective decision of what we were presenting to you this evening. And that's where we are. And you you know, eighty-five percent, I I I can't tell you. I can't define a difference for you, Councilmember Meyer.
And just to chime in here, councilmember, I I think one of the things to keep in mind here is that when we start making changes to these models, it's not just a numeric change. It's also, is this a sequent change? What other ripples are there from dropping this po- this stone in the pond? So those are the sorts of things that staff wants to have a chance to work through before they can give you definitive answers. And hearing this input on the dais doesn't give a lot of time to to do that sort of analysis in a way that can provide you with the most information to make your decisions tonight. So we certainly welcome the input, um but that's the struggle that staff has.
And then.
Understood. And I, when I'm questioning, I'm asking as much about um litigation as I am about potential interest from, you know, companies.
Understood.
I think everything is at risk to be sued, everything. There's not one thing we do that doesn't put us at risk in a lawsuit, just FYI.
That's not my only concern, though. That's not all I said.
Yeah. Yeah, but it's like this would go to interpretation. And basically, they're saying some might interpret this as downzoning. But if we are delivering the unit that we said that we would deliver, it's not downzoning. But if we are delivering the unit that we said that we would deliver, it's not down zoning. So then you would go to court and have to sit there and it'd have to be interpreted. Did we, our, our intent is not to downzone. And that's what we're saying. We don't want to downzone. We want to give you the unit that we committed to. So. With the acreage and the midpoints that we came up with when we just, when this was all designed. I just think, you know. It just feels. And I, I've come in the meeting for years. It feels like the minute someone says lawsuit, like Vice Mayor Rodriguez said, it's to scare everyone off. Like, you know what? Let's forget it, forget it, because we're gonna get sued.
That's not my only concern.
Well, I'm not done talking, Vice Mayor. I know it's a risk, but for you to put it in the ether was irresponsible.
Okay, that's not my only concern, Councilmember Mendoza.
Well, that's what you brought up.
Okay, well, that's too bad. I think that's my only concern.
Well, let's, uh. Go ahead.
No, I mean, Mayor, I have a motion on the table, so I'm just waiting to see what you want to do with that.
Well, I, we're, we're gonna, um, take a look at this table real quick. To answer the.
Can you make that bigger, Josh, please?
Yes, I'd be glad to.
Thank you.
I'm not sure that I have the exact numbers, but based on the modeling that we would typically use, our target number of total dwelling units within the PA one area is. Two thousand forty-one, based on the twenty-eighteen EIR. And so if you look at some of these calculations. Uh, this, this is as already been agreed to, uh, twenty-seven acres at a midpoint of fifteen. Uh, thirty units, thirty acres of multifamily HDR at a midpoint of twenty-five. And then in order to build back to the density, it'd be about thirty-one point five units at, um. Uh, which would be the acreage times a midpoint times point eight-five, which is your development capacity of, um, residential. So an eighty-five fifteen split, and that'll, that'll get you to the two thousand thirty-six, just looking at it within a couple minutes of, of, of review. Is that, is that what you have, Councilmember Mendoza? Or close to it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Forty, yeah.
So if you were to.
Include Adam's lane, so yeah.
Okay, sure. Um, so if you were to compare. The recommendation from the staff report, uh, with an eighty-five percent, uh, so eighty percent versus eighty-five percent, which is really the last item to decide. Uh, alternative C to D, this shows the, the net differences in acreage between C to D. Um, so you do gain some ECLI compared to what was proposed in the staff report. You would have a net reduction of two acres in transit village. Uh, regional commercial was same, multi, multifamily, high density would remain the same, high density residential remained staying the same with. Um, transit as well as recreational amenity to tie back into our EIR addendum that we would prepare for planning commission.
So.
So I'll make a substitute motion to adopt, um, alter, alternative D.
I'll second that.
I don't even know what alternative D would look like. I, I mean. I mean, that's something, I mean, we just heard from our attorney say that if we make changes, they obviously can't just. I mean, do that right now, give us the right and proper information. It's something that, it really needs to be discussed further. I mean.
We're going back to B with some adjustments.
We're going back to B with adjustments.
Yeah. Mi- Mr., uh, Mr. Vice Mayor and, and Mayor and Councilmember, so. I'll try to illustrate generally what I believe the council is asking for us to do. So first off, we'll be changing this back to transit village mixed use. There's four acres here. Uh, which would basically move about four acres from this location. Sorry. So let's say this is about four acres. So move, we'll, we'll delete this area here. And then we also need to find two acres of transit village to, uh, fully delete in order to make it work within the envelope of the EIR. So the suggestion from staff would be to find another two acres or so here. And these red areas will return back to purple. And so we show that to your planning commission with their, uh, recommendation to approve. We bring it back to you in about a month.
And what is the top one again, Josh? Can you explain that, the one over here?
Uh, the, the.
Like, yeah, the, by the trail. Yeah, that one there.
Yes, sir. Uh, yeah, so that would be transit village mixed use, which would be brown, and that would be a mixed use product with. Commercial on the first floor with a, a density requirement for commercial as well as residential on the upper floors.
Which is what it's been since two thousand and eighteen.
Uh, let's just say we have an opportunity in that area. Would that impact that?
Currently, we do not have a development application for that, for that property.
My, my concern, again, that wi- with that is the desirability of, of reality. Uh, yes, I, I, I understand, and I have seen, um, apartments and, and. That, that are basically in the parking lot of Home Depot or wherever. Um, having a developer look at that and say, you know, I, this is what it's limited to and I'm willing to do that. In my opinion, it's far less likely for a developer to look at that and say, say that than he is. To look at it and say, I'm going to build some commercial, regional commercial here, or the, put the purple there and give us some opportunities of. Um, more flexibility. That, that, that's my concern.
Can I ask, Mayor, are you about the eighty-five percent? Are you simply concerned about that move?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm very concerned about the eighty-five percent. Um, I, I just. I don't know that I can in good conscience. Like, like our, you know, Assistant City Attorney said, there are consequences to everything we do. They have vetted eighty percent and feel comfortable that we are able to defend that, that decision. They haven't vetted eighty-five percent. In the end, could it be?
They vetted again, there's no, there's no data of what they use to vet. That's my whole problem with it. There's no data. It's just their gut. Right?
I, I totally.
They're, that's not vetting. That's not actual vetting.
I, I understand, and I, I, I genuinely wish I had the comfort level with a hundred percent. I, I really do, because. I agree with your, your viewpoint. Almost a hundred percent. It's just. My, my level of concern with, with that decision is, is great.
So should we just take a vote on the motion? Because, because if not, we have to start over and like figure something else out, because I think we might be.
Well.
A couple hours.
Since there was already a, a motion on the floor for Alt-C from the Vice Mayor.
I know we got a substitute motion, so don't you have to take the substitute motion?
No, because, uh, as, as a chair, I had already acknowledged, uh, that there was a motion on the floor.
Did you second it?
So I, there hasn't been a second. Is there a second for the Vice Mayor's motion for Alt-C?
Yes.
Okay, we have a first and we have a second for the Vice Mayor's motion for Alt-C. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Mayor, before you go to the roll call, does that motion include the changes that we talked about? To, uh, the specific plan related to three stories, thirty feet? Uh, and, and does it also include switching of the transit village? I just want to make sure that we're clear on those two things. I'm sorry that I jumped in. I just want to make sure that it includes the items that we talked about as the proposed changes to the specific plan. We can talk about the map later.
Vice Mayor?
Well, for me, I was doing Alt-C, so, uh, I'll be prepared. I mean. Yeah, I mean, I'm doing Alt-C. I, 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 I want to stick with that map.
Perfect. Thank you.
I'm not, I'm not as clear on the second for that. I, I did what we talked about with the first story, et cetera.
Yeah, that was Alt-D.
But I do support the eighty percent. Not, not because I'm afraid of the lawsuit, but for the other reason.
That's a whole new motion. So do we not have a second on the floor? Do we have, are you withdrawing your second or do we not have a second?
I'm withdrawing my second if it's exactly the way Alt-C was proposed.
That's what he did.
Idea of the first story, hundred percent, like we talked about earlier this evening.
So, Mayor Assistant City Manager, um, would it be possible to maybe, uh, get direction on the land use plan a- as a first step? And then obviously, I think there's council discussion and potential full support of. The potential first floor and all the text amendment information that we would include to bring to planning commission. Is that one way to approach this?
I, I believe that that could be, um.
So if someone, if someone could stop, I forget who shared their screen. I'll share my Word document with the changes. I think there was universal, um, discussion related to these proposed changes. Can, do I need to blow that up a little bit more?
Yes, please. I think it was also, there was another page, um, four thirty-four, I think was the other page, uh, to remove. So on page four thirty-five and four thirty-two. Remove mention of adopted master plan.
Okay.
So on page.
Wait, did you say four thirty-four or four thirty-two?
Four, I'm sorry, four thirty-two and four thirty-five.
And I'm just gonna state throughout the entire document.
Yeah. Um. See. Seven, five, five, two. Okay, we got that, four ninety. Uh. Four, five, seven, and five, five, four as con fires. Okay, that's up there. I'm sorry, you took them out of order from.
Sorry.
I had, um, Tri Delta Transit, five oh nine and. Redlined. By twenty-two, thirty feet. All right. Uh, that's, uh, do we need to do anything to change to allow for rooftop garden, patio gardens?
I did not. I thought it was. You know, we'll, we'll just add it in there if we need to.
Okay, and as well as the, um. Uh, accordion, um, glass doors and, um, windows. For, um. Restaurants.
You've got a courting instead of accordion.
Thank you.
All right, I think that's. I think that's it.
Well, I will make a motion, uh, in to.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I am sorry to interrupt. One of our eagle-eyed planners, in fact, Jennifer Hagan noted that on packet page four seventy. Uh, residential care facilities with six or less are shown as proposed to be conditionally permitted uses. While the same type of, um, residential use is permitted by right. Under state law, both of those things have to be treated similarly. So in so much as plain residential uses are permitted by right. Staff would suggest that you consider changing residential care facilities for six people or less to being permitted by right. As well in order to comply with state law. Sorry for the late addition and many thank yous to Jennifer.
I, I. I'm, I'm very happy with that, that change to comply with state law. So, uh, my. Uh, motion would be, uh, Alt-C with these amendments as presented.
Okay.
So we have a first. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Should we just say yes and no? I say no.
Uh, Margaret, could I get a roll call vote, please?
I don't think she's available. I mean, I say no.
Councilmember Mendoza?
No.
Councilmember Meyer? Yes. Councilmember Mary?
No.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Brian?
Yes.
Motion carries three, two.
Okay, um. Moving on to item E one, uh, new request for council members. Uh, requesting consideration of future agenda items. Are there any new future agenda item requests, Councilmember Mendoza?
I do. Um, I received calls regarding some behavior regarding Vice Mayor Johnny Rodriguez. I had spoken to one other council person about it and we would like to censure Vice Mayor Johnny Rodriguez. We were told that, um, we can't, we're supposed to go to the mayor, but we didn't know we were gonna want to censure him. Um, so we, I, there's nowhere else for me to do it than in future agenda item. So, Mayor, I would like to censure Johnny this. Uh, Vice Mayor John Rodriguez, and I'm not sure if it's a closed session where we're discussing his behavior and his actions. Or if we do it out in public, but, um, they, to me, they're serious and, uh, we need to discuss it.
Could we get some legal direction as to how to approach this?
In brief, without going through a full discussion on this topic, Mr. Mayor, uh, you have rules of procedure that clearly. Set forth the procedures regarding, um, allegations made against council members by, by their colleagues. Uh, part of that is to consult with, uh, the mayor. Um, in this instance, um, it, the policy doesn't. Well, that's what the policy requires because council members have talked with each other about it. They can't consult with you about that issue. I have looked into this question. I don't have any, um, I, I, I don't see a way to, to have this brought forward without. Uh, taking actions contrary to that policy. Um, it is a council policy. It is a council policy. If the council wants to change the policy. That can be discussed. Um, and then that would, that would permit this to move forward. So that would be appropriate, but to, to have a future agenda on that, that's been requested is not permitted by your policy.
Okay, so let's talk about, so can we bring in the next meeting the policy so that then we can move on to the censure?
Well, a- again, the, it, it doesn't move that quickly, Councilmember Mendoza. There are a number of steps you take before anyone gets censured, uh, by the council. Including the hiring of investigator to look into the issue, and there has to be a policy violation as well.
Yeah, we can go ahead and start it though. It's fine. We have, we have time.
All right, well, that, that does, as I said, the future agenda, it was to look at your policy on ethics and conduct. That's certainly something the council can discuss on, on how they may want to amend that.
Yeah, because I am concerned. I mean, I had called you after one of them about calling the police department because I was concerned for.
Councilmember Mendoza, this, you, you've, you've explained your, your request and I've explained what you can do. Um, and it, it can be put on the agenda as a future agenda regarding the ethics and conduct policy and how that might be amended, not the specific discussions of the allegations.
Okay, it's just our urgent, so if we could speed up from staff perspective, that would be.
As we do with all of them, it'll be at your next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further new agenda item requests at this time? Okay, seeing none, uh, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Done, man.
We have a first.
Second.
Second, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yeah.
Councilmember Meyer? Yes. Councilmember Rary?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez?
Hi.
Mayor Bryant?
I.
Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you. Well, we are adjourned everyone, uh, be safe.